I still don't get that respect at home, though. To begin with, our pastor, Ben Lee, is not able to make it today, so we'll have a moment of silence. Those that wish to participate, following the moments of silence, Supervisor Miller will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I try to be in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now begin our Pinellas County Board of Supervisor meeting regular session dated September 4th. We are September 4th, aren't we? Wednesday, September 4, 2024. Thank you for being here. Due to a scheduling conflict with outside council, executive session agenda number 18, we'll have to take a break to go meet with the special counsel that we have. In addition to that, Supervisor Kavanaugh was not able to make it today, but he is joining us telephonically. Are you there, Supervisor?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So let's begin with item number one: Discussion with the county attorney on the legal parameters, limitations, if any, and use of call to the public by the Board of Supervisors and public attendees. Mr. Volkermer.
Good morning, Chair. I apologize. I'm out of breath. The card readers aren't working. I thought you all fired me, so... Chair, board, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Kent Volkermer, Pinellas County Attorney. What really prompted this discussion is, at the last board meeting and really consistently at Call to the Public, we have become increasingly closer to violating open meetings law. As your advisor, it's incumbent upon me to bring this to your attention. I know I had a conversation with the chair. Chair said it's probably best that we have this publicly. That's why we're here today. We are required by law to properly agendize and to notice any topic that's going to be addressed. Obviously, we have a full crowd here today, but depending on the issue at large, it is quite possible that there are a number of people that would be interested in the conversation, that are not being privy to be here to hear it, to understand what's going on, and essentially have their own voice in the conversation or the discussion. You know, a call to the public is actually not a right. It's not guaranteed. I'm not advocating. I'm just informing at this point. There is no guarantee to a call to the public. In fact, it's actually found in statute, and it is sort of a afterthought, almost. So if you look at 38, 43101, and you look at subsection I, it says, "A public body may make an open call to the public." And then it says, "If that open call to the public is made, there needs to be certain parameters, specifically it's subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions." And then it specifically further limits the interaction that this board can have with the public at large. For example, call to the public cannot be used essentially as an end-around to be able to voice a concern that the board member would like to address. And I'm not suggesting that this has happened or ever will happen, but the board member cannot put essentially a plant, ask them to come to Call to the Public, make a comment, and then open the floor to discussion. There was actually a bill this year that proposed allowing that to happen, and it was specifically authored and introduced by J.D. Meznard, Senator from Chandler. It passed the Senate. It did not pass the House, and that's specifically what it proposed to do. And I'll actually quote the relevant section. It says, "Members of the public body may discuss matters raised by those who address the public body during an open call to the public." There was quite a bit of debate that actually occurred on this very topic, and the concern was that that allowed an end-around, the open meeting laws. So I'm bringing it to this board's attention that just because your name is mentioned does not give free rein to have a conversation. In fact, it is only to respond to formal criticisms. And even when you respond to those formal criticisms, your comments should be very limited, and if you want to have a full discussion, it should be properly agendized so all the relevant parties can be there, the information can be provided, and a full discussion can be had on the merits. The other issue that we get into is there are always First Amendment issues, and if anybody was unfortunate enough to witness what occurred at the surprise city council meeting about two weeks ago, it was -- I don't think it sat well with anybody. And if you're not familiar, really high level, what happens is a mother came to the Call to the Public. She wanted to use her three minutes to essentially criticize, I believe, the city attorney, who's in an appointed position at that point. The mayor, who acts as their chairman, essentially said, "Hey, we've got a rule. Says that you are not allowed to criticize individual people." In fact, this board has that same rule. She essentially said, "Look, this is violating my First Amendment rights. I want to be heard on this. I've, you know, expressed every other grievance I can. This is the only avenue that I have left." The mayor said, "No, you're not going to talk." And ultimately, the woman was arrested in front of her 10-year-old, was actually led out in cuffs, and it's a pretty ugly situation. Something similar happened in the town of Gilbert beginning of the year, and ultimately, the town of Gilbert actually paid out in that manner. I'm bringing that to your attention because what I'm asking this board to consider doing, and I'd actually ask you to do this, is we have a work session scheduled for next Thursday. I'm asking that this board set these type of Call to the Public, board rules, all of those things as an agenda item. I would ask that you consider setting it as a public hearing, so the public could have an opportunity to be heard on it, because this board's going to be faced with making some decisions. This board can be treated essentially one of two ways. It can be a limited public forum, and if it's a limited public forum, there's case law that says you have to clearly define what the limits of the conversation that are going to occur from this podium is going to be. Or you can be what's called a designated public forum, and if it's a designated public forum, it means it is free game. There's no limitations. They can't swear, something like that. But this board, I think, right now is walking in a dangerous sort of no-man's-land. We kind of have one foot in each. For example, we seem to have no problem if somebody is being praised. And I say that as somebody -- last time, if you all remember, Gail Peters, you know, made me tear up. She was very effusive in her praise of me, and that's great. But we don't let people tear other people down. You know what I mean? Like, you're allowing one and not another. You're getting dangerously close to actually restricting types of speech. There are merits to both. There's also the ability to eliminate Call to the Public. You can move Call to the Public. What I can tell you is about half the counties have actually moved Call to the Public to the end of the calendar, and the rationale behind that is essentially, I don't know how many people are here for Call to the Public or here for particular items, but a lot of them are county employees. There are a lot of people that are professionals that are here. There are people that are personally being impacted, maybe on a zoning hearing. And what happens is sometimes our Call to the Public can last north of an hour, so they're all sitting here not personally getting anything out of it. So the idea is to do the business before the Call to the Public, and about, again, half your colleagues have went that way. I know Madam Chair over here, or Madam Clerk, actually has a roster that she can provide to everybody, which what each county's doing. But I think these are all conversations we need to have, particularly going into what I anticipate is going to be a hotly contested election, and this board has to decide, are we going to allow people to effectively make pro or con campaign speeches for their, you know, favorite candidate, or are you not? All of those conversations need to happen, and we've got to put essentially rails on it, or we take the rails completely off. Right now, we've got one training wheel on this bike, and I would ask that this board consider setting a formal hearing to, I guess, clarify this issue. And I'm happy to answer any questions. That's really my pitch. This is just hopefully a teaser to a much more in-depth conversation. And again, I would ask you to seriously consider making it a public forum, because this is going to impact the public, and I think hearing from them does make sense.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question.
You bet.
What were the two types that you said?
I want to make sure I say them properly, so give me just a second. So there is a limited public forum, which I would argue we currently are a limited public forum, but if that's the case, then we need to put very clearly defined rails on. And then the other is a designated public forum. In a designated public forum, there's no control whatsoever. People can come up, say anything they want about -- I mean, look, we could -- you can't drop an F-bomb, that type of stuff, but otherwise, there would be no topics that would be off limit, including attacking people, including praising people, including spouting their politics, whatever. I think this board just has to make a decision, and then obviously, my legal team will be prepared to sort of give you the pros and cons. This is a policy decision. It's not a legal decision. We will tell you the consequences of going either way, but ultimately, this is a decision that you five, acting as one body, has to make how you want your proceedings to move going forward. I just don't want you to violate open meeting laws, because the reality is it's a $500 fine, and the second time it's a $2,500 fine, and then at some point, if they believe it's pervasive, they can actually remove you from the dais and take away your position. So I have an obligation to do everything in my power to make sure that we're not violating Arizona law.
Thank you.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I would concur with you as far as meeting, having an open meeting with, and allow the public to speak in regards to that. I think it's been a couple of years since we've actually looked at this, right?
I believe it was coming up on two years, yes.
Okay. Okay. So for a future agenda item, we ought to do something like this. I don't think we're going to have a special session next Thursday, correct? There's nothing on the agenda.
That is correct, Chairman. There are no agenda items on the meeting for next week, so that meeting will be canceled.
Okay, so our next board meeting, we could put it on the agenda?
Yes, September the 18th.
That'll work.
Okay.
Chair, we can do that. It might make more sense to do a work session, because it could be very, very lengthy, depending on who shows up.
Yeah.
Obviously, that's your decision to make, but this is probably better for a work session, because I anticipate a lot more dialogue than what we would typically see in a standard meeting.
Okay.
Chairman, if I may, our next work session is not until November the 13th. We do not have one next month.
Yeah, I'd like to try to -- yeah, sorry, Kent.
No, no. I didn't realize that.
Is there a reason we don't have one next month?
Um, we didn't have any things on the agenda, but we can do this one, I guess, if everybody's open to that.
I would -- Mr. Chair, I'd suggest that we do that.
You bet.
Oh, yeah. Yes, and then we have RTA. Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Are you good with Thursday, next week? Let's just do -- yes, next Thursday, yeah.
Okay, so the meeting next week, we'll continue that meeting. We will have that meeting. That meeting will not be canceled. So it is?
September 18th.
September 12th.
12th.
September 12th, yes.
Okay. Good.
Yeah, so it says discussion. I think right now, we could discuss this for an hour right now, but we really don't want to. That's why we put it future.
And we're, I think, more than anything, I think, what Kent's saying and discussing with you, it was making the public aware of what we're going to be looking at and evaluating, and it'll give them time to craft or come up with suggestions, or whatever the case may be.
Chair, that's certainly correct. I can't stand up and tell you that open meeting laws are about agendizing things properly, making sure the public knows, and then do an end-around to essentially curtail potentially Call to the Public. I think setting it is the only right thing to do in this circumstance. I mean, it is agendized, so we could talk about it. It is not set for any action, because the public, again, that descriptor, I know you've expressed this before, oftentimes the descriptors are so short, you really don't know the substance. It's unlikely, realistically, that the public would have a full grasp of what we were going to talk about today. So I think moving it forward, give the public a full opportunity to gather their thoughts, be prepared to speak, is the right thing to do.
Well, you went several different directions in what you laid out. I mean, the planting someone in the office, in the audience, is different than the mother in Surprise, who I didn't see her do anything wrong. I think she should have been able to speak, but then I see that there are some other ways where this can get out of hand, so.
Chair, Supervisor Serdy, that's -- all I was trying to do is kind of set the parameters of what the conversation is likely to entail, so we can wring all of it in. That's sort of what my hope today was about.
Okay. All right, so let's do -- yeah, Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in the past, the chairman asked the Board of Supervisor members to respond to a criticism. Will that be the policy continuing going forward until we make some other policy?
I think that's what we're going to discuss next week.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board.
Thank you. So September 12th, we'll do that, and we'll make it a special session and allow the public to participate. Okay, now, item number two, Call to the Public. I have some cards here. Gail Peters. I think the rules of engagement are up on the -- they will be.
This is your last week to say whatever you want.
That's right.
Oh, good. My name is Gail Peters. I'm from Santan Valley. Kevin Kavanaugh has completed quite a number of nomination forms in his -- since he arrived in Arizona 11 years ago. He ran twice for sheriff, twice for Congress, once for Justice of Peace, and he only won once as our supervisor here for District One on his second attempt. That's a lot of losses against a single win. He has had to complete nomination papers for each of those offices. He's also filled out forms for quite a number of lawsuits and accusations against his coworkers, which cost the county money and which he lost. In addition, Kevin Kavanaugh has filled out quite a number of public record requests. I filled out a PRR request myself this past week and learned that, when I learned that Kevin Kavanaugh had recently submitted paperwork to run as a write-in candidate for county recorder against Dana Lewis. I need to point out a problem with the paperwork that he submitted. He reports he is 56 years old, and he has lived both in the United States and in Arizona for 57 of those 56 years. Obviously, he has not. He arrived in Arizona as an adult. So obviously, he didn't live here for 57 years. The form more accurately reports that he lived here for 10 of the 11 years he has spent in Arizona in Pinellas County. Not 57 years at all, 46-year difference. A minor issue, an obvious mistake, I guess, but this form indicates a careless approach towards completing records, something that is vital in the role of a county recorder and in tabulating and reporting results. An accompanying letter with his nomination form indicates he recognizes write-in candidates rarely win unless he states that individual is indicted in a scandal for, and I quote, "Planning and orchestrating the most sophisticated vote-cheating operation in modern American history." I hope that was intended as a joke, but given other comments he's made, can we be sure? If he submits nomination papers with such glaring errors about his own particulars, why would voters trust him for the accurate tabulation and reporting of our ballots? The job of recorder and election director, which Dana Lewis has filled admirably, but not according to Kavanaugh, who claims that there's a -- he claims that he could do a better job despite an obvious lack of experience, temperament, or aptitude. We've seen this movie before. We've been to this circus under the mismanagement of Mr. Frisk, who at least had some experience in our elections -- in elections. Our county suffered a loss of reputation that was reported around the world. Mr. Kavanaugh is making a symbolic gesture, as he admits in that paperwork. Symbolic or not, it will have costs and consequences. The Board of Supervisors made the right decision in pointing Dana Lewis as recorder, and voters made the right decision in voting for her. Mr. Kavanaugh should find a better line of work.
Thanks, Ms. Peters. Okay. Barry McCain. Did you fall asleep?
Good morning, Chairman Goodman, Board of Supervisors, staff, friends. My name's Barry McCain from the city of Maricopa. It's election time again, and claims and accusations are happening abound. I've toured both Maricopa County and Pinellas County election sites. Both have been built to give the best possible election to the peoples to be heard, and I'm very proud of the actions of Dana White and anyone on her staff, the county attorney. Thank you for explanations. Got me nervous. And this Board of Supervisors, and of course, Mrs. Rodriguez, I don't think she should ever have anything to say about, bad about her. Two of the most banal excuses for running for public office this year has been, "My brother was shot," and the other was, "I'm Italian." In the city of Maricopa, I've been very clear about problems that they have there of cronyism and nepotism. I think free speech is the most important thing, and the reason being, I think that's how this country started, lack of free speech. England didn't want us to have something to say about our own place. I think that a lot of people are now just complaining, just be complaining. I appreciate this Board of Supervisors. There's nothing more happy at my age to see you work so hard and so well with each other. I believe, and I'm admiring each one of you and those that I talked about, and I know that your ability is top of the line. Couldn't ask for anything better. But we're going to have people want to run for office to make themselves feel good, like they were something. This legislative session, we're going to have to work very hard because of this accusations that we don't need. It's going to be difficult, but we're going to get through it, because I know that we can. Yet, we found out on this board that conflict distracts from productivity and leadership shown by action, not by wearing a shirt. I think that I look forward to being with you on this session, just as difficult it is, because we're going to serve the people and their best will, that they ask you. That's what the Constitution says. We, the people, that means the people's will should be involved at the bargaining table, not on the menu. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Arlen Trout?
Before Mr. Trout, I am told by Natasha I need to record on record that I am submitting two pieces of paper to her. It's also along the same comments that I made from someone else who supports Dana Lewis.
Okay, thank you.
I have copies for all of you for what I have to say. Okay. So, good morning. My name is Arlen Trout from Gold Canyon. Since September 2003, this board has failed to respond to my emails or requests citing advice from publicly funded attorneys. However, Ms. Kennedy confirms that each of you have received my reports and requests for assistance. Under Statute 11, 251, I demand a public response regarding the unethical behavior by public officials that I have reported to the board over the past year. I specifically ask responses from Mr. Goodman, Serdy, Kavanaugh, Miller, and McGuire. McClure. Trout versus Russell exposed a scheme to conceal ethical and criminal violations by falsifying and filing records and violating court rulings, protective orders, and building codes to favor local, high-dollar land developers. Maricopa County Attorney Wayne Beck now claims he does not represent Pinellas County in the Trout matter. Hiring an expensive outside land development specialist to fix a criminal matter requires an explanation. By ignoring my reports and evidence, Pinellas County officials now face sanctions, penalties, and additional legal fees. The Trout matter demanded a response from this board long before the court required one. Why do Kent Faulkner, Chris Keller, Wayne Peck claim they do not or cannot represent Pinellas County in this matter? I demand that this board clarify these issues and explain this costly scandal to me and the public. Will each of you please explain your role now? Respectfully, Arlen Trout.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. We have been named in a lawsuit with Mr. Trout, and so therefore, we as a board cannot respond. Thank you. I have the paperwork, so... Okay. I don't have any other cards. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak in open Call to the Public? Mr. Repp?
I'm Noel Rec from Eloy. I couldn't be here for the last meeting as I was participating in the Casa Grande Mayor's Reading Club. I did watch the video, and I have to say, that was quite a call to the public. But before I comment in any of that, I'd like to put in a plug for the Mayor's Reading Club. After working with high schoolers for a career, I was a little bit hesitant going into an elementary classroom, but I got to say, it's entirely too much fun. It only takes an hour or so out of a Wednesday morning once a month. It does conflict with this meeting, so you'll only be able to come here once a month. But if you're interested in reading to these youngsters, please contact Amber Cant at the Casa Grande Library on the Vista Grande campus, and if you live in another community, you might consider contacting her for advice on how to get this started in your own schools. Now, for the last meeting, what did I miss? There was what has become a biweekly, fantastical, repetitious indictment of the Democratic Party. That was followed by the appearance of Casa Grande Union High School governing board members, Hox and Hunt. Their appearance, like watching a couple of six-year-olds run in from the playground to tell the teacher someone said something mean to them. I knew it was coming when Mr. Hunt was elected and Mr. Hox was appointed. I'm not surprised that they tout the Runaway Universal Bachelor Program, crammed down our throats by former Governor Ducey in a Republican legislature. Am I disgusted? As a career-long teacher and coach, that public school board members, public school board members, would do so, yes. I won't speak to this further. There's a far better time and place. Now, my main purpose in speaking here today, two meetings ago, we were treated to another attack from Sheriff Lamb for having the audacity as constituents to question the agreement between the county and the production company that wants to produce a cops-type TV show featuring the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. For that, we were attacked as political activists, promoting Democrat lies, police haters, trashing the police at any opportunity, having no facts to support our concerns, and not one, and being troublemakers. Nothing was said about the integrity of his agency's staff. The concerns were about the production itself and the need for transparency in light of the negative stories about, other negative stories about the county. I did question the timing and motivation of the agreement. I'm sorry that rubbed Sheriff Lamb the wrong way, but his reputation precedes him in his actions, associations, and words. I wish I could be more trusting. Sheriff Lamb will be gone soon. What worries me is Lamb endorsed Sheriff's candidate, Tito, bringing more of the same. From the rhetoric I've heard from him, my concerns are all too real. That's why I'm supporting Patrick Melvin for sheriff, a man determined to take politics out of the office. I must say, I was disappointed in the board remaining quiet, hearing Sheriff Lamb's attack. I don't understand the unwillingness or inability to speak up, nor conversely, the willingness he preys on him following his rant. I believe it's more aware of his actions, associations, and words of which I speak. A response, a focus on the future, is needed. Chairman Goodman, I recently shared a Lamb video with Supervisor Miller. I believe you and the rest of the board should see it as well. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Ravelis.
And may I reserve my chair?
Don't let anybody take that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Chairman. My name is Roberto Ravelis, resident of Gold Canyon. I try to speak what I speak at Call to the Public with emphasis on truth, transparency, and accountability. Two days ago, we celebrated Labor Day, a holiday that Congress established in 1894 as a tribute to America's workers, celebrating individual workers. as a tribute to America's workers, celebrating individual workers in trade and labor organizations who have improved everyone's standard of living and whose labor contributes to our economic strength as the most powerful economy in the world. This Labor Day is an appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, to note Pinal County's energized economy that is experiencing the highest job growth of any county in Arizona, with a 16% increase in new jobs between 2019 and 2023. Thank you, workers, for enriching our local economy and our daily lives. And at the national job level, thank you for the humor that was injected by Michelle Obama responding to the Republican presidential candidate's admittedly weird accusation that migrants are taking black jobs and Hispanic jobs from Americans. As Michelle Obama put it, who's going to tell him that the job he's currently seeking might just be one of those black jobs? Genuine thanks, however, to you, members of the board, for growing American jobs in Pinal County by seeking and using the Biden-Harris administration's American Rescue Plan, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, the CHIPS Act and Science, and the Inflation Reduction Act, all of which were voted for by every Arizona Democratic member of Congress, but cynically voted against, opposed by Arizona's members of Congress. Bottom line is that workers, residents, small businesses of Coolidge, Casa Grande, ELO, and surrounding communities are enjoying these economic gains from vehicle manufacturing and energy-producing solar panel projects, while drivers throughout Pinal County are benefiting from highways being upgraded by these infrastructure funds. All of these significant gains in quality of life made possible by Democratic legislators in Congress and the Biden-Harris administration of the White House. Again, thanks to our fellow laboring workers for keeping alive the values and dignity of Labor Day, which, when joined with enlightened political leadership, will contribute to bring the American dream to all corners of Arizona. Remember in November. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ravelis. Okay, is there any others? All right, seeing that there's none, a close call to the public. Let's move on to item number three. This is an announcement of Kenneth Diamond to the Open Space and Trails. Natasha?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes. You were, you were called out and criticized, so you've got an opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the lady for pointing out my single error in pasting those, those numbers into the form. Yes, I incorrectly pasted my age into the Arizona's form. And so I thank, thank the lady for putting that out and will make that correction. And then the, the other error she pointed out is not an error at all. We did not live in Pinal County for one year, so that's the most accurate depiction of my time in Pinal County. And then finally, with respect to running for office, President Lincoln ran several times and failed, and, and that's the way it goes. In this particular race in 2024, the mathematics show I won the county sheriff's race by 54% or more. I'm an accountant, I hold a bachelor's degree, as does my wife. I hired a statistician, I hired a prominent data scientist, and we all concur that the data in the 2024 primary election was manipulated.
Mr. Chair, I have to point, point, point of order. I believe we're getting off track from the, that's not a agenda, and this is campaigning. As far as I'm concerned, that's what he's doing here.
Okay, I would agree. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Kavanaugh, but that's, you go beyond the scope of what we should be. Thank you. Okay, item number four, presentation of certificates of service to employees. Oh, wait, no, we're back to three still. All right, keep me in line. Is Mr. Diamond here? Oh, good. Well, one of the things is, you know, we have a lot of our public that participates in various committees. Mr. Diamond, who works for Rural Metro, stepped up to the plate and said he'd be happy to sit on our Open Space and Trail Board. And so I would like to give you a certificate of acceptance, and we rely a lot on our volunteers and the effort and time that you guys put in. So, thank you.
You want to speak? Always a pleasure. I appreciate it.
Oh, no, I'm glad you stepped in. Where's Kevin at? Oh, there he is. Yeah. You know, politicians, we never miss my treat.
Or farm marshals don't either, so.
Trying to figure out where I want to go with nobody in the background. And, nice smile, love it. Three, two, oops, stand by, sorry. There we go. Three, two. Okay, Goodman, like you mean it. Three, two. There we go.
Might be hard to believe, but as a young kid, I was very shy. I don't think I went on my first date until I was 18. And I wanted to go on other dates, but she had to ask me out, so. Okay, now, item number four, presentation of certificates of service to employees for 20 and 40 years.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Today, we have the privilege of honoring two, I guess, I would say, legends and pillars of our organization as employees. First, and I guess if I could just, as I announce this, Jim Higginbotham has been with us for at least 40 years. I think Joe is going to explain that it's actually more than that. And I remember back when I was assistant county manager, the previous county manager mentioned to me when he said, hey, I want to assign you to oversee public works, there was two people that he said, you know, make sure to connect with these two, because these two are the ones that will tell you what's been going on and where they're at and where they need to go. And one was Joe Ortiz, who is standing here now, and the other was Jim Higginbotham, who's walking up. So, thank you and look forward to hearing from you.
Great. I feel kind of honored and privileged to say a few words about Jim. Leo is correct, it's 40 years of continuous service, but the reality is, there was a slight break, so there's an additional five. So, totality, there's 45 years that Jim's given his life to Pinal County, literally. So, just to give you perspective on 45 years and what, how long ago that was, some of the kids in the audience might not remember, but there was this thing called cassette tapes that recorded music on. And at that time, there was this high-tech thing coming on that was called a compact disc, CDs, high-tech stuff. That was back in the 90s or 80s. There's also this thing today that we call the internet that was not available for the public. There's also this other high-tech thing of MS-DOS. Before, there was this thing called Windows. The Berlin Wall was still up and active. So, that just tells you how long ago Jim's been here. Back when population of Pinal County in 79 was less than 90,000 folks. Today, we're pushing over 500,000. That, that's a huge difference. It's probably well over that now when the next census comes in. There was no city of Maricopa. Santan was not really even a thought. Saddle Brook was not around. That was just an idea in Ed Robson's mind. Gold Canyon still had fresh paint on the resort, and that's all that was there. So, and Queen Creek, Queen Creek was not a town either. It was just unincorporated. Now it bleeds into Pinal County. So, that just tells you what perspective there is on the days that when Jim came in, we were extremely, extremely rural. There's Hunt Highway, Park Link was just a dirt road that it was tough to travel on. Now they're paved. Ironwood, there was no such thing as Ironwood. It was called Vineyard Road, and it was just a dirt trail at the time. And I go into those because Jim actually had his hands, literally, in building those types of roads. That's, Jim started back in the day as just a heavy equipment operator, moved up quickly into a foreman. In those days, we had foremen for construction crews, we had three construction crews, and Jim, like I said, literally had his hands in building those roads. Quickly moved up into superintendent role. And now, today, he's our street maintenance and operations manager. That just goes towards his, his value and, and his need that the county has taken upon. Now, he actually is in charge of about 140 employees are underneath his branch. That, that's just a testament to, to this guy and his dedication to Pinal County. Words just can't, I just can't do justice to the appreciation that I have for Jim. He's one of those guys that is an action guy. You have a problem, you give it to him, Jim solves it. That, that's, that, to me, is a model employee of the trust that we can have in Jim. I don't, well, I would like to say we can get another 45 out of Jim, but I kind of doubt that. But I do appreciate the time that he's given us in the past, and, and like I said, words can't explain my appreciation for Jim. Thank you.
Want to say a few words?
Joe's taking up all my time. I would just like to share my appreciation to the board and to the county manager's office and staff for recognizing long-term employees and taking that, that moment. And please continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, is there one more, Leo? One more, and then we'll get them both.
Thank you, Joe and Jim. Jim's made so many roads in this county, if we could, we should name one after him. I think we're still working on to see if we could do that.
We've got a parkway we're working on. Higginbotham Parkway.
We have the privilege of honoring another longtime pillar of an employee in our organization, Mary Clements from Public Health. And Marissa, the public health director, is walking up, and I've had the privilege to work with, with Mary personally over the years, and she is just an example of an excellent customer service-driven manager who treats her customers and her colleagues with the kind of respect and kindness that they deserve, so thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Supervisors, Marissa Mendoza, Public Health Director. We are celebrating Mary's 20 years today. Mary oversees two of our really critical public health services. She oversees the central appointment desk. Everyone from around the county calls to get their public health questions answered, and they talk to Mary's team. She has trained them so well. Some people have questions that are difficult to answer, and that team is unflappable because of Mary's leadership. She also oversees On the Go Express, which provides critical transportation services to seniors in the copper corridor. And those people really rely on Mary's team to get them to their doctor's appointments and things like that. Very important service. Apart from that, Mary is kind, she's supportive to her coworkers, and she's really a very good problem solver. If you have anything that you can't figure out, you go to Mary and she's got an answer for you. One of my favorite things about Mary is that she gives a really great pep talk. If you are feeling down, Mary is the one who is going to boost you up with her enthusiasm and encourage you to keep going, keep working. Mary, I really appreciate how you not only support me, but you support all of our teams. I just want to say thank you so much. Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, we'd like to get a photo with you guys, if that's good.
Thank you for cleaning up today. Three, two, and again, ready, big smile. Here we go. Three, two, one.
Okay, thank you to our employees. I would be amiss if I didn't express my gratitude. We wouldn't be running very good without our employees. Okay, item number five, six, supervisor district updates. You know what? I'm trying to hurry us along. Number five, county manager report.
Thank you, Chairman. That's right, we got a 10:30 appointment, so.
We do.
I just wanted to mention and let the public know that last week was the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Conference, and for awareness, there's over 1,500 attendees, elected officials all throughout the state. The county is not technically a member, since we're not a city or a town, and we have our own county supervisors association, but I think it's really important that we show up because we are coordinating and collaborating and supporting all of our cities and towns. And quite honestly, being there, I probably got so much work done, being able to connect with the cities and other city managers and stakeholders and businesses and things that are at the conference, utility companies that help us to coordinate and, and take care of business. I'll just read off, and I know you all know this, but for the awareness of the public, the kind of discussions that are happening around the challenges and opportunities that the cities and towns and, quite frankly, the county as well, deal with. Budgets and bond funding, financial strategies, water, land use issues, mining, civil dialogue, tourism, economic development, affordable housing and workforce, emergency preparedness, transportation, so all of those things that we all have in common, that we're all striving to make headway in, in our communities. And I guess the last thing, our closing session was kind of interesting because we had a role-play actor as Abraham Lincoln giving a press conference after the Civil War and also taking questions. And one of the interesting questions that came up in that dialogue was, he had just signed back February 24th of 1863 for the U.S. Arizona Territory. And one of the audience members asked him, why did he do that, and what did he think? And he said, well, the, the land was very big at the time, as far as the territories were concerned, in that even though they weren't dense yet, that they needed more government close to home and close to the people to govern those areas, which is the spirit of local government and why we're here, so. So, thank you, and that's my report today.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we just got a few minutes for item number six. Board Supervisors Reports. Supervisor Kavanaugh. Anything going on in your district?
I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Supervisor McClure.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Supervisor Sertie.
Just want to remind everybody that Highway 88, Fish Creek Hill, will be open September 16th for four-wheel-drive vehicles only. So, it'll be great to be able to make the whole loop around again.
Supervisor Miller.
Nothing, nothing to report from District 3. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I, I have, I had the privilege of meeting with identical twins this last week and a half ago. And I'll let the video speak for itself, but one thing that, that I've noticed in our community of Santan Valley, we have very few amenities for our youth. And somehow, some way, these twins, identical twins, have been able to excel in a particular way. So, if we could show the video.
My name is Kate, and people tell us apart by our hair usually, because I have like a modern mullet in the background. And yeah, he doesn't have that. I'm Liam, and he does have a mullet. I definitely do not have a mullet. But also, we ride different stances on the scooter. So, there's called goofy and regular. I'm goofy, he's regular. We're mirror twins, so like, we're opposite in every way. I tried skateboarding, but I don't know, I just didn't get into it as fast. And about the scooters, you can just like flip in the very beginning. Like, in the first year of scootering, I learned how to backflip. You can do the tail whips, 360 pretty easily.
I never had the courage to do anything like this. Watching these young men was just like, I was going, oh my gosh.
Identical twins, running together. They always cross the finish line in running, one right behind the other. Just been who they are. They have a special bond, and yeah, they're, they're best friends.
We live in Santan. We've been in our home for two years now.
The reason we decided to move here is we wanted more opportunity. We wanted economic opportunity, community opportunity, obviously, affordable housing. We like the space. And just the sense of family and how kind and welcoming everybody is.
Nice.
Gary Sinise, most people remember the movie Forrest Gump, and he played Lieutenant Dan and has since become an incredible resource for families of the fallen. So, Gary Sinise Foundation is a foundation that helps families of fallen military and first responders. We lost my husband one year ago, actually, today. As a first responder, a paramedic firefighter. He was their biggest supporter, a phenomenal dad. And so, we've been really trying to get our feet under us this year while a big push for the boys with their sport at the same time. It's been a lot of overcoming. And the Gary Sinise Foundation has helped us incredibly.
My best trick was a trick that has never been done before, a worlds first. My best trick is a double backflip, but it's also, I'm trying to get it perfected, so I can do it like every try.
They started in scootering because all their sports closed down during the COVID times, and they just started going every day diligent and pushing each other to learn new tricks, looking online, then getting better at competing. And then they had the national championships in Salt Lake City. 18 and under, it wasn't certain that they would qualify as 15-year-olds, but they worked really hard and pulled it out.
Competitions always make me feel pretty good when I go there. Trying to come up with a 60-second run or 45 seconds, whatever it is, it always makes me enthusiastic and I love it. Yeah, I get so nervous, like, right before the conference, right before, like, when he announces your name, that's like when I'm the most nervous.
They have fun, but they, they want to make themselves proud, their family proud. They want to, they want to represent well their sponsors. So, they take that part of it seriously, which is really impressive to me for their age.
These kids are out here putting forth an effort. This is something that they really like and enjoy and love. The passion's there. And when they take that passion and they channel it in the right direction, they've been able to qualify to be able to go to this World Skate Games and probably even place at 15 years old. And twins.
So, now we are venturing into international territory where the scootering scene is really huge.
The World Finals is in September. Oh, yeah. World Finals in Rome. You have to go to qualifiers throughout the year and place really well at each of them. We qualified out of like 100 or so people, maybe more, but only four juniors got to go, and we're two of them. I mean, it's a ton. I wasn't really expecting to qualify, and I did. Crazy. We did not both expect to qualify.
We, as a society, need to give individuals like this, especially our young people, the recognition for their efforts and things of that nature. And this is important, that we highlight these two young men.
I want to be in the Olympics one day, when scootering is put in the Olympics. The Olympics. Hopefully, one day, they'll accept scooter riders. Then we can qualify for that.
They're, they're in Rome right now. They're in Europe, preparing for their big day, their big debut on the world level. So, you know, when I first came into this office and looking around us, and with six high schools, we've got six, just in my district alone. Well. Well, you've got one of mine now. Six in that small community of Santan Valley. And we don't even have an Olympic-sized swimming pool or any kind of a swimming pool that these kids can train. And so, where's the Mark Spitz at from Santan Valley? I've always had that. That vision, that we've got talent here that can be exposed to the, to the world. And these two young, young men, tragedy though it was with her father, they moved here and they continued their training and everything else. We, we videoed that out at the Queen Creek Park. Queen Creek spent a lot of money on their skate park and things of that nature. And these two young men go there regularly to train. And I look, my envision in the future, and I'm telling my board members this too, is that we have some type of training or some kind of recreational activities such as this right here, that the, these kids can discover their talents and then be able to expose them and bring them out and give them the recognition that they need. So, we, I, I think we sent them a link, didn't we? To where they could have watched this, and so hopefully, they were able to get on. But again, I'd like to give them a round of applause. Okay, thank you. Oh, it's 10:30. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chair, I move we convene executive session.
Second. We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? We are now in executive session. Because we have an additional executive session, we'll just recess our executive session for now. And we'll go on to item number seven. Discussion approval, disapproval of a request for the Board of Supervisors to approve a proclamation declaring the month of September as Workforce Development Month in Pinal County. So, I have Joel Millman and James Smith. Are there, Joel? Come on up, buddy. Joel, before you, before you speak, I, I just got reprimanded. So, I need to make sure that in our executive session, Supervisor Kavanaugh recused himself because of a potential conflict of interest in regards to the item that was, that was discussed. So, okay, Joel, you're on.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Leo, Chris. Joel Millman, Director for Arizona Work, Pinal County, also with the Economic and Workforce Development Department here in Pinal County. As you've mentioned, Mr. Chair, September is being recognized nationally as Workforce Development Month. And we have a proclamation that we would appreciate for consideration for approval. And, and then we have a special guest here to, if approved, read the proclamation, if okay. Before we introduce our special guest, I'd like to just thank you individually and collectively as a board in support of all the workforce development efforts that are going on in the county. It was mentioned earlier about the tremendous growth in the county and the profession, professionals that are contributing towards that effort and matching the available employment opportunities and those seeking to fill those opportunities with employment is greatly appreciated. So, Leo, on behalf, I'd like to thank County Manager's Office. Chris, with all your support and your team. Board, thank you again. And now, we also have a Pinal County Workforce Development Board that is helping lead the efforts within the county. And if it's okay, I'd like to introduce the Chair of the Board, Mr. Harold Chris.
Yes, you may.
Thank you, sir. Chairman Goodman, I was afraid you might take a lunch break or something. You know, we'd miss you again.
Supervisor Sertie will. He won't let me forget it, so don't worry about it.
Members of the supervisors and Mr. Lou, Mr. McClure, thank you for allowing us this time to say a few words about the Economic Development Board. And I have to say to my dear friend, Roberto Ravelas, in talking about what is happening in Pinal County and how the jobs have been funneling into this wonderful place that we all get to call home, Roberto hit on a lot of the things that are actually going on and that as the Workforce Development Board, we get to be a part of. So, just real quickly, I want to, I think Chairman Goodman, you received a copy from the Office of Economic Opportunity, which due to the efforts of our leader and our Director, Joel Millman, and, and James Smith, had put together the next four-year plan for economic development and for what is going to go on with the balance of the, the Workforce Development Board. We have to do that every four years. These people have put an inordinate amount of time together to put all this in place. This took hours to do. And the, I'll just read the last sentence of this letter that you've got a copy of. It's from Mark Gasperz, who is the Chair of the Arizona Workforce Board. And in it, he says, "The council very much appreciates Pinal County Workforce Development Board's continued dedication to the Mission of Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Residents of Pinal County and the great state of Arizona, we look forward to celebrating more of Pinal County Workforce Development Board's continued successes." I might add that in traveling around the, the state really, there's 13 different boards that are scattered around. This board, due to the efforts that you all have put into it with Mr. Lou and all the, the backing that this board has had and that the staff has had, this is recognized as the number one workforce board in the state of Arizona. So, you should be very proud of that because it's an effort that you all put into it to help make this happen. But having said that, let me just read the proclamation that we're, would like to pose today.
We'll, we'll actually vote on that before, before you read it.
Before, all right. Yes, sir.
Do we have any discussion or anything? Anybody wants to?
No, Mr. Chair, I move we approve Workforce Development Month proclamation as, as presented.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Second, Ted. We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Ayes have it.
Okay.
Oh, Supervisor Kavanaugh back on?
No.
No, he's not. Okay.
That's okay.
He didn't call back in. Okay.
Okay.
All right. You can read it.
All right. Good. Thank you. Whereas Pinal County is dedicated to fostering a thriving economic environment by empowering its residents through education, training, and employment opportunities. And whereas workforce development is essential to the growth and stability of our local economy, providing businesses with a skilled and capable workforce and individuals with the skills necessary for gaining, gaining employment that really makes a difference in their career and in their whole advancement. Whereas investing in workforce development helps to bridge the skills gap, reduce unemployment, and support the economic well-being of our community. Whereas the collaboration between educational institutions, businesses, government agencies, regional partners, and community organizations is crucial in creating effective workforce development programs. And whereas recognizing the importance of workforce development highlights the ongoing efforts to enhance job training and employment services for residents of all ages and backgrounds in Pinal County. And whereas Pinal County acknowledges the hardworking and dedication of all workforce development professionals who contribute to the success and prosperity of our community. And whereas during the month of September, various activities, workshops, and events will be organized to promote and celebrate the workforce development efforts across the county. Now, therefore, we, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim September as Workforce Development Month in Pinal County and urges all residents to aim in recognizing and participation in the valuable workforce development activities that are going to be happening throughout the community. So, thank you for doing that. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We would like to get a picture with you, if that's okay. You and Joel. Are you good with that?
Break the camera again.
All right.
Okay, you're totally happy about this. Ready? Three, two, and again, one more. Three, two, one. I'm not sure you're really smiling. Three, two. There we go.
Just a quick comment by me, if I could, in regards to the workforce. When I came on board eight years ago, I'm, I'm in my eighth year. It was a big strategic planning that we did to start to entice and bring the various businesses that have come here to our county. And I commend our, our county leadership that, to not only the Board of Supervisors at that time, but the ones that have succeeded, and then our county management. We've had some, several changes in our county management, but yet they have all stayed focused towards bringing employment opportunities to this area over the last eight years since I've been on this board. And there's a number of our companies, Lucid, Nicola, Frito-Lay has increased their capacity, Procter-Gamble, LG. Those are just a handful, and there's many more that have come out this way, that will continue to come out this way as we continue to move forward with a vision to bring more employment opportunities for our citizens here in our region and in our area. So, I commend all of you for doing that. Thank you to our workforce. Item number eight, Purchasing Division.
Good morning, Chairman Goodman, Vice Chair McClure, members of the board. Angie Woods, I'm the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance, and I have the pleasure of presenting to you today's Purchasing Division Report. The report includes one contract award recommendation for IFB 2506. The report includes one contract award recommendation for IFB 250630 for commercial refuse and public recycling. The Board has requested to approve one contract amendment for RFP 200125 for legal case management software. Additionally, the Board has requested to approve one sole source justification form for a purchase over $100,000. There are three cooperative purchase agreements between $100,000 and $250,000 that this report makes you aware of. And lastly, the Board has requested to approve two cooperative purchasing agreement order, purchase orders over the total of $250,000. Are there any questions or any items you'd like to discuss?
Any Board member? We have none. Can I get a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the purchasing division report as presented.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any oppose?
Thank you.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Item number nine, consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a member of the Board, County Manager, or members of the public wish to have the object pulled as, as the agenda item is called. So is there any items? I have item H I'd like to pull. Is there any from the Board that you would like to have pulled? County Manager? Anybody from the public? Mr. Ravelas?
I have W.
W? Okay. Is there any others? Okay, seeing that there's none, can I get a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items, A through Z, minus H and W.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? And it is unanimous. Okay, item H, if I could speak to that, I just, the reason why I asked to be, make it pulled is I just wanted to make it known to the public. We've had a lot of, of individuals take backroads because of construction and things of that nature, and even our farming operations, when they harvest, in this particular area, we've been working with the farmer and with the State Land Department to kind of cut down the traffic that actually comes out onto Gansel. It's kind of a leg, a difficult place to, to pass over because you've got the railroad tracks right there on Gansel. And so these harvesters have been coming out on that road. And so with the help of the State Land Department and, you know, yes, Union Pacific, I was going to say UOP, which is University of Phoenix, but you, Union Pacific, when in conjunction with them and us, we've been able to procure their permission, and we're putting a gate up in that area to help limit the amount of traffic that comes up. The people in Incantera, they got to be pretty happy about that, especially the ones that live along the fence line there, that get a lot of the dust and things that gets into their pool. But I just wanted to recognize our, our staff and their efforts of really working with the different governing agencies to make this possible, so I appreciate them. So with that, can I get a motion moving item number H forward?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item H as presented.
We have, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Okay. And then item number W, is there something specific that you wanted to speak to or ask about?
Thank you, Roberto Ravelas from Gold Canyon. I'm supportive of item W, but I'm just, my question is, what is the formula on the allocation percentage-wise between the Sheriff's Office and the community program recipients?
Do we have somebody from the Sheriff's Department here that could, oh, there's Matt.
He just happened to.
Snuck in on me, buddy.
Sir.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, Matt Thomas, Chief Deputy with the Sheriff's Office. I'm sorry, I was in the hallway, so I did not hear if there was a question or just a statement.
I, I think the question was, the percentage of what goes to public, and correct, Mr. Ravelas?
The formula that you used of what's going to go to the public safety.
Okay. So if, addressing Mr. Ravelas's question, what percentage of all incoming money is going to be used in what capacity?
The formula that would be used and allocated.
Okay, so let me, I'll have to break it down a little bit for the YouTube piece because we didn't understand it initially. So YouTube has its own formula as to the money that's allotted for our account. So we have a YouTube account. That YouTube account is fed by our social media, so in the lingo of the social media, we cross-post, right? So we, we post to Facebook, we post to YouTube, we post to Instagram, and it's all part of our campaign to be open, transparent, communicate with our, our public. So what we didn't understand as we opened the YouTube account and started feeding that monster is that when you hit a certain point for followers, so the number of people who are viewing your YouTube channel, the number of times that they view your posts, and so all of that, they have a formula for that starts generating revenue if you hit certain milestones. So we were doing it as part of our normal feed, and then we began to hit those milestones. And so what we started understanding was that our channel was making money or had the potential to make money for the stuff that we were already doing. So the posts we were already making were popular enough, our channel is popular enough, our agency is popular enough throughout the world, that we were getting the amounts of views and clicks that YouTube then says, hey, you have so many, so you can start generating revenue, which is the discussion we started having with you gentlemen early on, to say, we're generating revenue, it's not a tax, it's not costing our county anything, it's stuff we're already doing, and we would like to accept that money. So we had to go through a process with YouTube to get there. We got through that process, and this is essentially giving us an account to put that money in. Right now, we have about 55,000 sitting in that account waiting to go into a bank account at the county. And we make about, we're averaging about 10,000 a month, so 10,000 in income a month that would go into that account. Now, how that's going to be used is, there's, there's several things going on. RICO, as most of you know, the, the RICO funding and how we can use that funding has been restricted more and more and more. And so a lot of the community programs, for instance, youth redirection is one of them. Youth redirection being, we have kids that get in trouble, and rather than putting them into the justice system, we are redirecting those efforts, horse therapy, counseling, stuff that we're paying for through the Sheriff's Office, through grants and using RICO, we're no longer allowed to use RICO, and a lot of those grants have run out. So this becomes a funding source for some of those programs. We don't have a formula, we, we don't, so for this bank account that this money's going to go into, we're not saying we're going to spend 10% on youth redirection, 10% on community programs. We don't have that formula because we don't know what that looks like right now. We just know that this is revenue that we're generating, that we want to get into an account, and we want to use that money for those purposes. But as we kind of navigate through this, we have to figure out exactly where those expenses are going to go. And of course, at the Sheriff's Office, the Sheriff being the elected official, he may determine, I'm going to put 50% towards community programs, and the other 50% is going to go towards maybe equipment. So it's all going to be determined by the elected sheriff at that point, and so there is no formula that I can provide. And I, that was a very long answer, but I wanted a full understanding of, of that answer. Yes, sir.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. I think that it's important that the public knows how we got to this position right now based on, you know, and I, I appreciate the transparency that you're, you're providing here.
Yes, sir.
Leo, does, when it comes to budgeting and everything from the Sheriff's Department, that, all that kind of information goes through our budgeting process, correct?
Correct. Yes, Chairman, they work hand-in-hand on that, and on both the allocation amounts for estimated revenue and expenses, and also as we go into the future years, what to do with those monies. So we, we work hand-in-hand to do that.
Okay.
If I could, Chairman?
You bet.
A, a point to that also is, since we've been the administration, since the Sheriff has been the Sheriff and I the Chief Deputy, we have reestablished an open line of communication with the Office of Budget and Finance. We have monthly meetings with them where we sit down and essentially we get monthly audits. Where are we at? How are we doing? Where can we improve? And revenues specifically is something that is paid attention to, i.e. JEF inmate welfare. What are those expenses? Are they in line with what they're meant for? That type of stuff. So this revenue will fall right in line with that. And of course, with Kent's office, at the County Attorney's Office, we have those same discussions, because there's legalities with some of these expenses, right, and how we can spend them. And so we have those discussions as well to make sure we're falling in line with what we can do with the monies and how we're spending those monies.
Okay. Supervisor Miller, you had a question?
Yeah, just real quick, and I, it's not really a question, but maybe a suggestion or thought process that maybe there's some community input on how some of those funds might be spent, or suggestions. I think even through the RICO money in the past, there was kind of a committee or something that would look at, and look at those disbursements before they were signed off on. And maybe for these funds, you, maybe the Sheriff might consider something like that going forward. It's just a suggestion.
Supervisor Miller, Chairman, great suggestion, and we are definitely open to that. We've had that discussion with the County Attorney for this account specifically because we want to ensure that you all, your constituents, our constituents, are all understanding and comfortable with, with how this looks. And quite frankly, we feel at this point that this is mainly going to fund our community programs because it was a huge blow to us when they, they being the legislators, restricted our ability to spend that money on kids and programs in the community. And when they put that restriction in place, it immediately removed that funding, and this is going to be a huge win for us in that area.
Yeah. Okay. Just my thoughts.
Supervisor McClure?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And could we maybe, in say, the last quarter of the year, just take a look at this to see where the funds have gone, how it's being spent, and then moving forward, we'll have a new administration and maybe, you know, feet, feet under them, you know, but, you know, six months down the line, say next year, and say June, maybe, that we, that we look at that again, just to see where the money's going, just so that we keep constituents.
And to that point, Supervisor McClure, Chairman, again, we, we are pushing forward as, as we do get a new Sheriff. It's already in place, the, the budgeting meeting, so you guys have the same look at our budget as, as Leo's office and the Office of Budget and Finance, so you'll be able to see these revenues as we go along, but we'll be happy to provide detailed reports if you want them.
Just to the public, so they see, I mean, we see it, but the public doesn't see it.
Yes, sir.
So if we could do that going forward, that would be great, you know, maybe the last quarter, and again, like halfway through next year.
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Miller?
I think the most important thing will be to see how much revenue you do receive.
Right.
I mean, on, on the front end. I mean, seriously, it'll be interesting to see what, what's generated.
Right, and, and.
And that'll give you a better idea of how you can use it, too.
Yes, and, and like I said, at this point, when we flip the switch, we'll have about 55K that'll immediately go into that account.
Okay. Is there any other further discussion? Can I get a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item W as presented.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? And it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now recess the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting, and we will open the meeting of the Pinal County Public Services District Board and Directors. Let's see, item, Public Health. So we have, what we have here is consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a Board Member, County Manager, or a member of the public objected at the time that it is presented. Is there any items here, items A through C, that you, any Board members? How about County Manager? Anybody from the public? Can I get a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items, A through C, for the Pinal County Public Health Services District meeting.
Second. You have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. Okay. We'll, we'll now close the, yes, Chairman?
Chairman, if I may, Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Okay, just confirming that you voted in favor of that last item.
The, the Sheriff?
Yes, the.
The YouTube item?
I'm sorry.
I was a nay.
That was, say that one more time for me.
Nay, I am opposed to it.
Okay, so you're opposed to the Public Health Services District agenda?
No, the previous item.
Item W?
Okay, so your vote for item W is against, nay.
Correct.
Okay. And then your vote for Public Health Services District, A through C, is in favor.
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had your votes recorded correctly. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll close the meeting of the Pinal County Public Service, Health Services District Board of Directors, and we'll reconvene our, our regular Board of Supervisor meeting. Item number?
Eleven?
What's that?
Eleven.
Eleven. Yeah, let's go with an item number 11. I, I would like to, I wasn't on the call with, I had a meeting I had to go to the last time when you, when we went into executive session for some legal counsel. Can we do that again? Can I get a motion moving forward?
I can't.
Going in, oh, we don't need to. We've already, all I did was recess it. So I'd like to go into, back into executive session, reconvene executive session, and so that counsel, I can get some counsel on this. So we're back in executive session, in the room. I know that the, the public, it was left open the last time around, this was a continuance. Is there anything you want to add?
Mr. Chair, Board Members, the only thing, one item was that the, the resolution presented here changed slightly, there is a little discrepancy in one of the numbers, I think, with that, so that's been cleaned up since then. And as of, as of now, about approximately nine o'clock this morning, items of opposition, we counted 52, and items in favor, 108. So that's the latest, best guess count we have for you this morning, but more may have come in that we don't know about.
Okay, all right, thank you. And because.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes.
Could, could we have the gentleman identify himself for the record so that they know that he's staff up?
Glenn, would you do that?
Glenn Bach, Senior Planner.
Thank you. Okay, because of, this was a continuance from the last meeting and the close of the, the public hearing was not closed officially, I have several cards here in regards to this particular item. However, I'm going to ask you to be on the honor system, those that did not speak last time are allowed to speak this time. So if you spoke last time, you've already made your, you've already made your case, and so if you, if you spoke last time, please don't come up and speak again. But if you didn't speak last time, you could come up. I have Glenn Walt. Did you speak last time?
I did, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The public was under the impression that they could not speak about health issues last time, so I feel that if the public wants to speak about something different than they spoke last time, that they should be allowed.
Okay.
That's, that's two times at bat, though.
Yeah, that, that was going to be my concern. You're providing various members of the public, you know, two opportunities to go and speak. What we instructed the Board the last time was that the Board could not consider any issues regarding health or environmental concerns, provided that the radio frequencies are within FCC standards and so forth. It was the Board could not consider it, not that the public couldn't come and complain about any of that.
I understand that, but the public last time was under the impression that they could not. So if they did not get to have their say last time, I think they should have their First Amendment rights to speak on this item now. have their First Amendment rights to speak on this item now. It's at the chairman's prerogative, I believe.
You put me on the spot, didn't you? For those that spoke last time, I'll give you one minute. Okay? Mr. Glenn Walt.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'll do this quickly. This is statistical. There was information given along the time, and I'm not saying that information was inaccurate, but it wasn't complete. Jumping along, these were the surveys that were taken. There were another survey taken with 26 were for, 14 against. And quickly, this is in their packet. These were the reasons not interested in a cell tower when they took their information. 238 said, "We have a problem because it's going to be too close to the homes." 115 said, "Even if it looks like a Sowor, it doesn't fit in our neighborhood." 72 said, "The tower will comment about that." But that's like nearly over 400 and some were against it. Then it says, "Other comments were made. We do not want the tower." Then some comments, no concerns. Other 260 responded, "If it's located in the right location, we accept it." 304 said, "If it improves our cell service." 103 said, "If the HOA receives money." 92 says, "I don't want the cell."
Okay.
I think statistically, the overwhelming majority said, "No."
Thank you, Glenn. Thank you, Mr. Walt. Dieter O'Neill, did you speak last time?
No, I did not.
Okay, come on up.
Chairman, supervisors, staff, my name is Dieter O'Neill. I'm a 23-year resident of Gold Canyon, and I'm here in opposition to the cell tower. With the help of Photoshop, I prepared some visuals that I'd like to give to Natasha to hand out. Just while she's doing that, to make a point that when I moved to Gold Canyon, I did not move for the bustling nightlife, the five-star restaurants or resorts, the museums, art galleries, or shopping opportunities. We moved because the superstitions were so beautiful and the community was peaceful. On my handout, on the first page, it shows a 70-foot cell tower behind Bashes, and how it would look to someone standing in the parking lot or viewing the plaza from US 60. The second picture shows Bashes Plaza from another perspective, and includes the cell tower with the god-awful plastic leaves that are proposed to be used that will melt and fall off in the first summer. The third picture shows a small map of the area. The proposed cell tower will sit in a long, narrow lot to the immediate north of Bashes Plaza. See the orange oval. I included a picture of the lot in the bottom right-hand corner. High-intensity electrical poles and lines form two rows and run the entire length of the lot on either side. The tower will have to sit in between these rows because there is no other place. Is that even safe? The map also shows the Boulder Pass neighborhood, which sits just north of the proposed tower lot. In the fourth and last picture, I show the perspective of the homeowners in the Boulder Pass neighborhood with a cell tower right next to them. Two of its cul-de-sacs butt up to the proposed site. You can see how a 70-foot tower would dominate this neighborhood and its homes. Would you want to live there, next to this huge cell tower? What will that do to the property values of the Boulder Pass neighborhood, to the Gold Canyon community property values as a whole? Please vote no on the proposition to build this monstrous 70-foot cell tower behind Bashes Plaza. There have to be alternative places for it that would benefit the community technologically and not ruin it by industrialization. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neill. I have Janice Harbaugh. Did you speak last time? Okay, come forward. Oh, and could I, when you come up to speak, make sure you give your name and so on and so forth, general area, but then maybe step away a little bit from the microphone?
Okay.
Supervisor McClure has sensitive ears.
Chairman of the Board and Supervisors, my name is Janice Harbaugh. I'm a Gold Canyon resident for the past 20 years. I sent an email to you that included. He told me to step back. Okay. I sent an email that included five pictures of a tower that I visited over at Tomahawk and US 60. I'm hoping you saw those photographs. I wanted to make sure that the camouflage leaves were shown. They were missing. They were drooping. I saw painted graffiti on all sides of the base structure. I also discovered a major safety hazard as the gate was not locked and was left open so anyone would have the opportunity to enter this easily accessible location, vandalize the equipment, and possibly climb the tower. In fact, the enclosure wall is so short, anyone could climb right over it into the maintenance room. The very same scenario could occur at the Gold Canyon location. Another known fact is that property values decline, and homes are more difficult to sell when a cell tower is visible. There are 60-plus homes in Boulder Pass, the subdivision adjacent to the proposed structure. A lower home price eventually equates to lower real estate tax revenue for Pinal County. I collected petition signatures, which I provided, from Superstition Foothills residents and talked with these residents. Only one resident out of the 26 homes I visited did not want to sign the petition. Only a few had experienced infrequent drop calls, and the majority were happy with their current cellphone connectivity. Personal experience, I worked from home 20 years telecommuting. I had no issues with my carrier. I firmly believe that additional time is needed to allow data studies and community awareness before making this decision that can negatively impact an entire residential community, both monetarily and aesthetically. A large percentage of our Superstition Foothills community left in April and do not return until October. So some are not even aware of the situation. I'll close with one thought. Would any of you even consider purchasing or living in a home that is affected by the unpleasant aesthetic, the potential of safety violations and crime that the location of this or any cell tower might cause? Please don't ruin our beautiful community with this monstrosity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. John Kajowski, did I pronounce that right?
I spoke last time.
You did. You got one minute.
Excuse me, I forgot to give the court this petition signed by Gold Canyon residents.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is John Kajowski. I live at 7602 East Desert Honeysuckle Drive. I am opposed to installation of this cell, 5G cell tower within the homeowners' association area for several compelling reasons. First and foremost, proposed cell tower has a significant and detrimental impact on the aesthetics that appeal to our community. Our neighborhood is characterized as beauty and well-maintained homes in a harmonious blend of architecture and nature. Introducing a 70-foot 5G tower will disrupt the visual harmony and dominate the skyline. The proposed location tower rises issues of fairness and equality. Placing such a structure in a neighborhood affects the cost of living on the site, subjecting from visual pollution, among other factors. The petitioners prioritize being desired in an H-way. Decisions are made, but best results and entire community in mind. If our government says, "Don't look at it," we should be looking at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr., is it Mr. or Mrs. Kenna Collins?
It's me. I spoke last time as well.
Okay, so you know the, you know the rule now?
Yep, a minute.
Okay.
It's really short. I'm, I'm, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm, I'm not opposed to 5G. I, I will tell you that. I'm, I'm not, I swear, that's why.
Oh.
All right. So I'm not opposed to the 5G. I'm here actually to, to tell you about some alternate solutions for 5G. The macro tower that's proposed near the Bashes is an overkill. It truly is an overkill. There's femto cells that are smaller. There's pico cells. These are directionally, they're smaller, they're directionally, they can cover up to 300 yards, probably about the size of a large skateboard, and can be attached to any existing infrastructure, like buildings, poles, light poles, things of that nature. So they can be done. And they also can take those cells and direction, use them directionally. So they can actually go around corners. They can move those anywhere they want so they can literally line up and have service. So that particular area in Silly Mountain would be easy for them to set that up. Microcells, they're, these are all small cell options. Microcells also, a bit larger, microcell towers, but you can put those on buildings and they can be used. So these are other options for 5G.
Thank you. Okay, Martin Toma, did I pronounce that right?
I spoke last night.
Okay.
So, my name is Martin Toma. I'm a citizen of Gold Canyon. Like I stated last time, I worked in RF engineering for over 15 years. I'm also a real estate agent, as a licensed real estate agent since 2019. Once I got my license, I have to also basically become a member of the National Association of Realtors. They state that I stand to lose 2.65 to 7.6% in property value, and the Environment to Health Trust says that I stand to lose up to 20% in property value if the tower is installed. I just want to address an issue that was brought up about 911 calls. In terms of 911 calls, please understand that it doesn't matter who you're with, Verizon, Metro PCI, T-Mobile, when a 911 call is placed, sir, it goes to the most powerful signal. And I also want to say that, because I had a lot of information here, the data that he's producing is highly skewed. You can manipulate those colors to show green and red and show that it needs this much coverage here. But in reality, the only way we will know, sir, is with a CW drive test, which the company has not conducted. If we have a CW drive test, please, this is truly how we will know if we need a new tower or not.
Thank you. Okay, I have. Order, please. Lorraine Davies.
My name is Lorraine Davies. I am a resident of Gold Canyon and not a member of Adobe. This will be my 20 years in Gold Canyon, actually next month. Seen a lot of progress come through. I know our community has several retirees and a lot of new families, a lot of growth. I believe that the cell tower would help immensely. I think since COVID, a lot of people working from home, a lot of, even where I work, we have a couple people that work at home a few days a week. In my home, I still have a landline because I do have calls drop. And so, let's see, what else? Essentially, the dynamics in our community have changed. The work from home, we need to have service for emergency services, whether, excuse me, you're in home or outdoors, walking, hiking. We have a lot of trails if something happened. Let's see, what else was I going to say? I think we need to move forward. Yes, some of our, our residents are seasonal, and they are not here. But everyone talks about the cell service down the 60, dropping calls. We've got the Renaissance coming up. We have a lot of young families, people that are disabled, that are at home, that if something did happen, that they have access to the service, whoever the carrier is. I turn down Superstition Foothills Mountain every day coming home from work. Today, I took a PTO day off to come and speak. I'm unfortunate that these meetings don't happen when there are more residents available to come and speak for or against the cell tower. But for my purposes, I am going to say that I am in favor, and I think it would, it would help the residents of Gold Canyon and those traveling through the 60 as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any more cards. Is there any other that would like to speak if they didn't speak before? Sir?
My name is Burdell Jarvis. I did fill out a card. I don't know how you didn't get it. My first love affair with the landscape was in 1947 when we came to Mesa from Mexico. And my father and my uncle loved to take us to the Superstition Mountain. It's the earliest memory I have of loving nature. I have a doctoral level degree in aesthetics. So I think maybe I have a little bit of qualification to say something about the appropriate and the inappropriate of constructions and architecture in that proximity to this mountain. I feel like, after 84 years of life in Arizona, I have an oversensitivity to the things that happen around this mountain. This tower is not going to be beloved like the Eiffel Tower in Paris. It's appropriate in Paris, but that same kind of steel construction doesn't serve humanity very well. I think I've heard enough observation from people who lived here. I've been in Gold Canyon 23 years, and this is a shock to me to learn that they couldn't find a better place for this obstruction to the view from so many angles that blocks the beauty of the nature around us. I hope that this does not go through and that they can find another and better solution to build this 5G tower. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have Phyllis Raul, Raul? Yeah, you're.
Greetings, supervisors. I have one simple statement to make, and that is, I'd like you to consider the, the beauty of Gold Canyon, the wealth of the people here in Gold Canyon, their property, and the love of their place, and also the health of the people. You don't have to hear that, but is a point. But also, it is versus the monetary value of that place in that shopping center. And that's got to be something you consider. It's monetary versus the people of Gold Canyon. Keep it in mind. We're talking about a single situation of money versus health, wealth, and aesthetic beauty of Gold Canyon. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any others that would like to speak? Belinda, now you can come up.
Good morning. My name is Belinda Rodriguez, and I am a resident of Gold Canyon. So the only thing I'd like to say is that there is plenty of empty land much farther away from this community that this tower could be put at. If you look at those pictures, it is at the base of homes that are already there. I would say that if they want to build a tower, put it where there's nothing developed yet, so that when people do buy in that area, they can make that decision at that time whether they're okay with living near a tower. You don't come and put it in somebody's backyard, essentially. In plain English, it is just flat-out ugly. So for those people who have said, "Yes, I think it would be great," but they don't live in the area, they drive down 60, it's about a quarter mile, maybe hit and miss that you lose service. I say it. I say to them, if you're willing to buy a house at the base of that tower where that community is, then you should be able to vote yes for this. Otherwise, it's ugly, it's all about monetary value, and I understand, because I love technology and I'm all about making money if you're a business, but I don't think this is the appropriate place for us. This is already an established community and they should look for somewhere where it's, they've got empty vacant land. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any others? Okay. The applicant's here, is right? Oh, I'm gonna close the public hearing and we'll have the applicant come back up. And I assume that you've got some information for us, right?
Mr. Chair, Supervisors, I do. I have some additional information that I'm giving to the clerk. That will, I'm not gonna go over all of it. I'm gonna try to keep it simple and hopefully brief, although I'm here to answer any questions you may have to the extent I can. Also with me is Mr. Kennedy. He actually did the drive test that was mentioned earlier, so he can speak about that when I'm done. It's my pleasure to be here, Mr. Chairman, members. I heard a lot of great things. I've been here the whole meeting. I've heard a lot of great things about the economic growth in Penal County. And that's amazing. You should be proud. I'm proud for you. But with economic growth comes economic responsibility. And part of that responsibility is making sure that your technology keeps up with that growth and that your technology enables continued growth. You've got some amazing companies here in Penal County doing great things, Nicola. They're gonna need to make sure that they have the infrastructure necessary to continue to grow here. And you're gonna need that infrastructure to make sure people move here, and you're gonna need to make sure they stay. Over 100 residents have spoken positively in support of this application. That means something. A lot of them can't be here because they work. They contributed to economic growth. And those contributors are telling you, do this. The application meets all zoning criteria, every bit of it. In fact, your zoning commission, they said, approve this. These are the people that you hire to make these decisions. These are your experts in the area, and they're telling you, do this. The alleged issues related to health concerns, as you know, they weren't brought up today because they can't be. One person mentioned them, you can't think about that. Because the law says that this application meets FCC requirements, and that's all that matters. There's been a drive test. Mr. Kennedy will speak about that drive test when I'm done with the chairman's indulgence. And the drive testing shows there is a poor, unacceptable level of service in that area. And our client, who's regulated by the government, is required to bring appropriate satisfactory service to that area for all county residents. Now, there's no empirical evidence to support anything you've heard today about dilapidated property value, potential crime. It just doesn't exist. It's not in the record before you. What you have is a misguided vocal minority, although well-intentioned, and I have no doubt they are well-intentioned, they are misinformed. This is gonna be a stealth wireless facility behind a Bashes in a parking lot that already has extremely high electrical power lines and lights in a commercially zoned area. And when the board considers whether to do this, as it has throughout all of your tenure and as it has today, you need to consider the interests of all county residents. This includes all businesses and first responders. This includes every resident's right to be able to communicate with the county, with the state, and with the world. Because our laws require carriers to bring the most advanced technology to all communities, including this community that's growing. The board needs to consider all residents' right to have safe and reliable access to cellular service so they can have first responders and emergency service, something that is dangerously lacking in the area. This board needs to consider the right of businesses to conduct their business throughout the county, throughout the state, throughout the country and the world, so they can continue to grow and this county can continue to grow. The board needs to consider the rights of students to be able to learn as much as possible using the latest technology. And in this day and age, to be able to do that remotely, to be able to do that from As far as the concerns you've heard about the area and the site, I cannot speak to the other tower you've seen pictures of and that I passed on the way into town today. And I'm not gonna sit here and pretend it looks good in the condition that it's in. But I'm gonna tell you, that's not my client. My client will make sure this tower is kept up. It will be checked every 60 days as every tower my client's involved with is. If there's graffiti, it'll be removed. If it doesn't look right, it will look right when they leave. There will be an impenetrable lock on the gate. People will not be able to get in. People can't climb these towers. It will be a safe area, again, behind a Bashes in a commercial area. And frankly, in a county that I consider to be one of the safest in Arizona as it Finally, there was an emphatic request that we run and have a drive test. Well, we did. And with your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite Mr. Kennedy up to explain the results of that test. He has provided the clerk via a email with a PDF copy of this report. He also has paper copies if you're interested. Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, and I'm assuming that this is Craig Morgan?
Yes.
That's on this, could he identify himself, just for the record?
Sure, you got it.
Because I wasn't sure whether that was you or not.
I'm Craig Morgan. I'm here for the applicant. Thank you.
You say your name.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Supervisor, my name's Stephen Kennedy. I'm a radio frequency consulting engineer. I'm being retained by Pinnacle Consulting to help with Sunstake Tower. I have a scanner drive test report, which is being handed out to you, which I think can be shown on the screen. This was made at the request of your community development director after the last meeting. And so I wanted to show what was going on in the area relative to what's doing for drive testing and what's doing for coverage. So as soon as that comes up, we can go. Now, I geek out on this stuff, so I'm gonna try not to glaze anybody's eyes over and go through this quick, but it's a 38-page deck, but I'm not, I'm not going to try to take a long time to do this. Okay, so this report generated on the first. So just my certification, I'm a radio frequency engineer with 35 years of experience. The drive test overview is I take an industry-standard scanner. What the scanner does is it reads all of the existing channels in the network on a blind scan and says, hey, what's out there? And I'll show the results of that in a moment. And I take a second scanner as a validation. It's just a singular, small portable scanner. This drive gear is quite expensive and quite detailed, but once again, it's industry-standard. Then I kept an extra phone or an extra active session with streaming going on as I was driving around. The drive tests were performed on August 30th. It scanned all networks, AT&amp;T Dish, which is marketed as Boost Mobile, T-Mobile, and Verizon Networks. So the blind scan, it's just what it is. I go out there, I tell it, hey, look, see what you find for channels, and there's a variety of channels, and look at what's going on, and we build this database, and then that's what we go scan. The channels shown in the deck are 600 megahertz, 700 megahertz, which we consider low band, right? So that propagates into buildings better. Then we have 2100 megahertz, 2600 megahertz. That's mid-band, right? So that doesn't propagate into the building now. And then we have 3800 megahertz, high-band. Make note that 90% of the spectrum owned by these carriers is mid-band and high-band spectrum. So I'll detail that out in a moment. So active frequency bands and channels in the area. Last time I remember, Mr. Chair, Supervisor, Sertie, you brought up 5G. If you'll look and look at the technology, which is the second column, so for each carrier, what are the frequency bands active? There are 5G bands currently active in the Gold Canyon area now for all four of the carriers. So there is an active, and they've been active for probably almost two years. So once again, 90% of the spectrum is mid-band, so I'll touch on that in a moment. The development director asked me to pull some, pull some, crowdsource some different data on coverage from other sources. I had two sources in my last justification deck. I added a third source called Ucla. This is basically an app loaded on any user's phones, and they report back to servers what they're seeing. Now, if you look in the upper right legend, that's the legend we talked about with was in-building green, in-vehicle yellow, outdoor negative 100 is red, and then the blue and the magenta is not marginal to no service. In the, on the left, you'll see that, you see a lot of red within the area where the arrow is. That's where the site is, the brash is. And if you look at the roads that move along and go towards the northeast and then back towards the west, there's a lot of reporting that's below negative 110 to negative 120, which is in that marginal service range. So this is Verizon Network mobiles reporting back to crowdsourced data servers, hey, we're not getting a lot of coverage in this area. If you look on the bottom right, you're gonna see a lot of green and yellow, which is indoor, and that's reporting back saying, hey, this is, this is good service. We're having, we're having good contact. So I did this for not only Verizon. Here's AT&amp;T. The biggest difference you'll notice is AT&amp;T, there's, there's less dots, there's less data points.
Supervisor McLaren.
Sorry, sir. So indoor, so this is from inside a building, so?
This is from wherever the mobile is at. Whether it's in-vehicle or inside.
Okay, so like at my house, if I'm home, my cellphone goes to the Wi-Fi. So is that saying that that's indoors on their Wi-Fi or that's indoors talking without?
That's indoors on, on the networks. That's not, not including Wi-Fi coverage.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. This is AT&amp;T. You'll notice there's a lot less users, so the network's not quite as loaded. I remember we talked about the water pipe analogy last time, where there's, you know, amounts of water per user or capacity per user. And then we look at T-Mobile. We've got even less capabilities within the T-Mobile network as the sites are farther apart. Here's the drive test route overview. So this is the areas I drove. I drove towards the southeast, closer to where the neighboring sites are, and then up into the area to the north, northwest, and to the south. Here's Verizon sites. So these are existing sites on air transmitting. The closest one is 1.69 miles away. That's the one that generated the green coverage on the very right of that one map. Let's see, come on.
Mr. Chairman, could I?
Yes.
Could I ask what the, the documents that Janice Harbaugh passed out, where did those end up? I want to ask a question on one of those sheets. We pass them down this way.
Just continue on, I'm gonna ask you a question.
Okay, yes, sir. Button, right? Okay, so this is the scanner report. So this is the Verizon 751 megahertz channel, so low band. So we can see that within the area, I kind of put the red circle that shows the intended coverage for what that site is, where the word, you see the word proposed and the, kind of can see the green pin, that's proposed site. And existing, what's going on in that area now, you can see the data points. What we're seeing is marginal to no service. We're seeing some outdoor, a little bit as the farther east you go, you start to get into some in-vehicle and some out, in-building as you go farther into the southeast. So this is for low band. So distinction, low band's going to propagate farther with the same amount of power than a mid-band. So we go to the next frequency, this is mid-band. Now, when the scanner is not able to decode any signal, it's not going to give a report for any data. So we can see that on Verizon, once we get over around the proposed, in the Bashes, we're getting outdoor marginal service. But as you move north up into the area with the residents, as you're getting into marginal and no service, because the scanner was not able to decode anything in the mid-band frequencies. So 90% of the time, we're not getting anything for mid-band up in this area because there's nothing there. It's being blocked, it's got ridges, we've got mountains, we've got cell density problems. Then this last frequency is the 3730, 300 megahertz channel, which is the high-band. We see even lower, so a lot more of low to no service and a lot of marginal. This is where we talk about fixed wireless, home internet, things of that nature. So that frequency, the higher you go, the smaller the coverage area is. Zoom, I just did a zoom in, so you can kind of see a little bit more granular in the data points, what's going on within the area. So there's a lot of marginal coverage, and there's a lot of outdoor services, but not quite as much indoor and vehicle services. Here's the 2125 megahertz, so the mid-band channel. So we're seeing, you know, some, some collection points to the southwest, but not much of anything else moving into the north. So the mid-band spectrum's not doing a lot. And looking at the high-band, it's even worse. So because I was out there and driving, I'm able to look at all of the carriers, so I thought it'd be interesting for you guys to see the other carriers. And once again, I'm trying not to glaze eyes over, I just want to get through my information. So here's the AT&amp;T neighbor sites. AT&amp;T is just slightly farther away, 1.5 miles to the southeast on the electrical transmission line poles. Let's see, so there's AT&amp;T 739 megahertz channel. Once again, AT&amp;T's lighter loaded, there's not as much capacity impact, that's why it's got a little bit better service than the corresponding Verizon low band. There's the AT&amp;T mid-band frequencies. So we're seeing, you know, low to no service, marginal up in the area of the proposed. See the zoom? What we're seeing there is just a lot of lack of data points because the scanner was not able to decode. And then we have the 2115 megahertz channel zoom as well, that where it's not, just not doing a good job. All right, here's Dish Network Boost Mobile. This was, this is an interesting, this is one of the 5G carriers. This is the 5G carrier they're using. You know, this is 600 megahertz. It's site, two things you'll see. You see a whole lot more indoor services off that site to the south, which is great. It's two reasons for that. One, it's 646 megahertz that's being transmitted, so it's gonna propagate farther. Two, it's a very lightly loaded network. There's not a lot of customers on the Boost Mobile network, so the network's going to do a little bit of a job working. There's the zoom, and once again, we get the same thing, even with the 600 megahertz propagating into the area where this site will affect most of these homes, it's just not doing anything. This is T-Mobile. T-Mobile has one site, 1.48 miles, and then we've just got two sites. So remember from the Verizon map, we've got a whole lot more sites, we have a whole lot more customers to take care of. It's a heavier, denser network. All right, so here's T-Mobile 731 megahertz channel and what it's doing for drive test reports. We see a lot of marginal, a lot of outdoor, not as much in-building and in-vehicle within the proposed area. We look at the 2147, so the mid-band, not getting a lot of coverage to the north. We look at their 2600 megahertz channel, not getting a lot of coverage. And then we look at the zooms, and that's what we're seeing. Now, what's interesting is if you look just to the northeast of the proposed site, that first little subdivision there, they're getting, I'm sorry. So they're getting marginal service and outdoor service, but the farther you move north, the less service you're getting. It's going from marginal to low to no service. So within this area, let's say, for example, we're getting partial coverage, we're getting coverage, it's not quite in-building quality, but it's, it's there. But that's only at 700 megahertz. It's not at the 2100 megahertz. And there's 2510. So conclusion, the scanner recorded frequency bands for AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon in the area. We show a significant gap in service. Low band, mid-band, and high-band do not provide acceptable coverage and quality to the north of the proposed on the gold site, on the site near the Bashes. I gave an appendix, it's just got some extra technical detail to explain things, and so I stand for questions.
Supervisor, Sertie.
So this is what we were handed before. It says, "Radio frequencies beyond this point may exceed the FCC general public exposure limit." Could you explain this sign and what all this means?
Okay, that sign is a regulatory sign that the FCC tells us to post on sites. So there's two types of, when the FCC looked at specific absorption rate, it's 1.6 watts per kilogram square. They reduce that by a factor of 10 for occupational coverage. And then they reduce that by a factor of 50 for general public. Occupational is, I'm gonna go inside the compound, and inside that compound, it may exceed for that area inside the compound. So that's why you get the blue notice sign. There's also yellow notice signs, which is a little larger, then there's red notice signs. If you're near a pulse radar or anything of that nature, you're gonna see that. So this is FCC standard criteria for us to post these signs, these guidelines. And that area inside that compound is occupational, but it is a controlled occupational, i.e. it's got a fence, it's got a gate, it's got a lock. Everything's controlled within that area, so that's something that's got a different standard. That's why you see that blue notice sign. But outside of that compound is general public and meets, you know, the phone right here next to my head is 50% of general public limit. The antennas on that tower, if I'm outside that compound, it's less than 10% of the general public limit.
So the further away you get, the safer it gets?
Proximity-based. As I double the distance, I reduce by the square. As I double the distance, I reduce by the square. Double the distance again, reduce by the square. Or if I go out to a higher frequency, it's reduced by the square.
When you're very close, it is not safe.
If you are on a crane with a tower with your ear next to the antenna, you would get more exposure. But what's in this phone? The only side effect is heat. So whenever you've been talking on a phone for a long time, what happens? It gets warm. So that amplifier in that phone is generating two things. One is generating the RF wave, the frequency wave. Two, it's generating heat. The side effect is heat. That's it. So when you get up on your crane and you go up and you stand in front of the antenna for thirty minutes, you're exceeding the, the safety zone. But nobody does that except for maybe the workers, and when they do, antennas are shut off.
Okay, thank you.
Sir. Any other questions?
Any? Nothing? Okay. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have some, uh...
Any further discussion?
Yes. So the, uh, the unit that is at Tomahawk by the Carl's Jr., it is horrific with the, and this, that's a palm tree, this is going to be an elm tree. So do we have any, uh, any way to hold these folks accountable, that when the limbs start falling off, that they will put them back? They said they will, but they're from California, and you can't trust people from California.
Is that in the stipulations?
I'm actually from Phoenix. Grew up in West Virginia.
Okay.
I take offense.
Okay, I'm starting to like you, then.
Look, um, tell us what you want us to do. We're willing to come back. I'm telling you, my client will make sure.
So, so this is a regular business? I mean, you have more of these, or if this is the only one, we, there is no precedent to know that they will?
My client's headquartered in Arizona, Mr. Sertie. We're not from California.
So they, so they have more of these, and they have a regular maintenance schedule?
They do, and they do this across the southwest. This is their business. They know what they're doing. This will not be that palm tree. But as far as getting legal advice for what it is you want or need, I suggest you talk to Mr. Volcomer, who, believe it or not, I respect immensely, his reputation exceeds the boundaries of this county, and he'll give you the right advice.
So through our code enforcement, then, if we do start to see that this is falling apart in the future, we can, uh, we can start to cite them, and they will put it back together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, may I sit?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I think your seat was saved, too, so... Okay, any further discussions by the board? Do we have a motion moving forward, then?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen as presented with sixteen stipulations.
Is it sixteen or eleven?
I'm sorry. Let's look at this, item eleven with sixteen stipulations.
We have a motion, do we have a second? I'll, I'll second it. So all of, yes, ma'am?
Can we, there was an update to the resolution and the planning and zoning recommendation?
Could we have that read into the record? Is that what we're going to need to do, is get it read into the record?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure, so, um, if I may, Glenn Bach here, once again, senior planner, so here consulting my staff report. So the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, voted eight to one to recommend approval of SUP, uh, oh thirty-five, twenty-four, twenty-three, correction.
So the correction is how many? Twenty-four, twenty-five, or twenty-three?
Oh, okay, so the case number's twenty-three.
Okay.
Okay? And the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission voted eight to one. So staff went through the, the minutes with that, and there was some confusion apparently with that initially, but we now come to the conclusion it's eight to one.
Okay, eight to one. And then, how many stipulations was there?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Sixteen. You want me to amend my motion?
Yeah, if you could.
Okay, with sixteen stipulations and updated, uh, item description to read, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, eight to one, on this updated resolution.
Correct. Okay, and I'll second that. So with that, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And those that oppose?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, so it's three to one.
No, three to two.
Three to two.
Yes.
I wasn't counting, Sertie. He's from Ohio. Okay.
Me, too.
Okay, so it was approved. Item number eleven's been approved. Item number twelve, please. Item number twelve and thirteen, we're going to hear them together, right? And with public comments or public, it'll be a public hearing, we'll hear both of those together, so... Oh. It's twelve forty-five.
Do we have another online attorney?
Leo, do we have another attorney?
Mr. Chairman, yes, you do. You have an executive session. Uh, we have James Marburger on, uh, I think it is item, item seventeen.
Okay.
So if you were to break and go into executive session, yes, you have an attorney.
And we can have, and we can listen to, okay. All right, well, we'll, I know, I know my buddy's over at, at Johnson Ranch, we're really anxious to get this one done, so... Okay, um, let's go, let's go re, reconvene back into executive session, then, and then have the attorney come in and meet with us on that.
This is for item...
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yeah.
Yes. Kevin's here on that, too, but, yep. James Marburger, who's the, he's, because he's, the guy's been dealing with...
Can I get a, um, motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're out of executive session. Uh, Supervisor Kavanaugh, back on the line.
Yes, Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Yes, I'm on the line.
Okay, good. Okay, items number twelve and thirteen, uh, we're going to hear these together, but Glenn, did you state your official title and all that? Could you do it again, please?
I will do so gladly, Mr. Chair. So Glenn Bach, Senior Planner, uh, here to present, uh, PZO thirty-two dash twenty-three and PZPD double oh seven twenty-three. So here we have, uh, what's otherwise known as Johnson Ranch Multi-Family. This is a request, uh, rezoned from CB one to MR on seventeen point six four acres to allow mixed-use development, uh, and approval of a plan area development overlay district on the same. Uh, this is located on the west side of Hunt Highway and, and just south of West Golf Club Drive in the Santan Valley area. Hunt Highway and GC LLC is your owner, Paul Gilbert, uh, is here, is your applicant. And so this shows you the general location of the proposed, and this is, uh, zooming in here more to the specific area and the case map and what the case details. Here you have an aerial showing, you can see it's vacant currently. And the general vicinity. So this is the, here now, we have the conceptual, uh, site plan of the project. So there's been some changes as the applicant has worked with staff and then also with the, through consultation with the commission as far as the access points. So what we have here is, is to the upper right, you'll see there's a traffic signal that's being proposed, so that'll be the primary entrance, and then you have the, the emergency, um, provided here along the south, but that's only for emergency. And then you have, uh, as, as far west as possible, so you meet the separation requirements. Uh, there would be a new curb cut and an access, uh, that would be a right-in, right-out, uh, to the northwest there. And this is, uh, showing you the building mixture here, so the attempt was made to keep the two-story, um, farther away from the, the residences, uh, adjacent to the site, and, um... The, uh, the, uh, projected open space plan. And this is looking, uh, to the northwest from the site, uh, to the south from the site, across Hunt Highway to the east, and then to the west. So, uh, again, this has been zoned CR five pad since ninety-seven, which allows multi, uh, multi-family, and in two thousand and eight, it was rezoned to CB one. Uh, something to consider is that multi-family and commercial can generate large volumes of traffic. Uh, proposed project will build one-story type units and some two-story located near the commercial and Hunt Highway. So, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, recommended approval with one stipulation for the rezoning, and then with seventeen stipulations for the PAD overlay. And, uh, staff would be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
Anybody have any questions at this point? Supervisor Kavanaugh, you have any questions?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this particular, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
This particular, um, project has the entrances and exits on east Hunt Highway, and the south entrance, it will have a traffic light, you understand it? So you can turn left, you can go north, and you can turn right. And then the, the right-in, right-out is upstream of that on the north side of Hunt, the north end of the project on Hunt Highway. But if there's an accident, has, has the planners considered this? Then if there is an accident, the persons would not be able to exit the apartment complex because the right turn only would lead them back into the accident at the traffic.
Could you go back to where those, their site plan, so that Supervisor Miller could see the, the access points that Supervisor Kavanaugh's referring to? So the entrance off of, is also an exit off of Hunt Highway. There's a light going to be put there, and there's a subdivision to the west of that? Is that correct?
So this here with the, your directions here, that I, it's hard to see the north arrow, I think it's in the very lower right, but it's more like, uh, this, so you're looking more. So the traffic signal that you see at the top of that there, that would be, yes, to the southeast part there.
It's to the east of the property, okay. And then on the west side, is, um, that's emergency only, or is that another access point off of Johnson Ranch Boulevard?
Correct, that's, that's emergency only. That had gone back and forth with eliminating that completely, and then, uh, the latest year is to, uh, keep the emergency as a, as a third.
Okay. Supervisor Miller, do you have anything?
There's a third, wait, I see two, where's the third one?
I don't think there, is there a third? Not a third one.
Well, correct, if you consider the, count the emergency as a third, so then you'd have the, the light, then you'd have the, uh, the right-in, right-out to the northwest.
Right-in, right-out.
Correct.
Are you counting that as two?
It doesn't show the right-in, right-out on there.
Yeah, where's the, I only see two access points.
Okay, so here's the signal. Look right behind you.
Look up.
That's the signal.
Okay.
So that's full access, and it aligns with the subdivision on the other side, and allows them to make lefts and rights as well.
Okay.
The second access is not shown here, but the second access is at this location adjacent, adjacent to the existing commercial, and it's a right-in, right-out only.
But they won't have...
The third access, but they won't have access at the apartments there, right?
No, they will. That's how you get in and out.
No, it's not showing it right here.
It doesn't, do you have the new picture? Because I've seen the new picture.
Glenn, do you have the new picture in your presentation that shows the access points, or is that in the...
I believe they, they have the latest greatest.
It's in the applicant's presentation?
Does the applicant have it in their presentation?
Yes.
Okay, we'll look at it, then.
So, so for Mr. Kavanaugh, I was told he, he couldn't see, obviously with me with the pointer. Here's the full access. Right-in, right-out access, and then emergency access only.
Okay, there's three.
So there's three access, and, and the applicant has, okay.
And, and, Chairman?
Yes.
The, the light allows the people across the street to enter and exit on highway.
On the other, on the, on the east side.
Because there's a big, there's a big development right there.
Okay. Any other questions of Glenn? Anybody? Okay, applicant?
Thank you. Nice to be here. Uh, Paul Gilbert, uh, seven oh one North Forty-Fourth Street in Phoenix. I, I think I should disclose to you, you've taught me something today. I have changed my fee agreement. Normally, I'm paid by the word. I switched it today to be paid by the hour, so...
We, we glad we got, you got some more money, then?
Yeah. All right, well, uh, with me is Kurt Waldair, who will be helping with the exhibits as we go forward. Also, I have with me the owners of the property. I'd like to introduce them to you, since they are a major developer in Pennell County. So I have Andrew Cohen, stand please, and his partner Gary Davidson. And they're here and available to answer any questions. We also have our traffic engineer, uh, who is here and, um, has prepared a very thorough traffic report, and he is available as well. We've been working on this project for two years, uh, and we've made a lot of changes over the years. Uh, we've made many, many accommodations, both for the neighbors and for the staff and for the planning commission. And I can honestly stand here and unequivocally tell you that I think the changes we've made have been very salutary, and the project is a better project for this collaborative process in which we have engaged. Next slide. Uh, here again is the same slide that Glenn showed you. Uh, this site is vacant infill. Uh, it's a transitional space between the single family and the, uh, commercial. As we reason together, I think it is of vital importance that you focus on this very salient fact. What we're proposing now is what was originally approved on this property when the master plan was approved. So the original Johnson Ranch master plan zoned this parcel, CR five, multifamily residential. CR five was the highest intensity multifamily zoning that was permitted in the county at the time. So we're going back to the roots. This is what was approved, except the difference is, we're coming in with an even lower density and less intensity than what was originally approved on the site, and that this multifamily was approved before the first home was built in the immediate vicinity. I think that's a terribly important factor to keep in mind. So what happened? We are primarily commercial developers, and when we looked at this site, we made the determination back in two thousand and eight that we would rezone the property, uh, to CB one. So we're the ones that came in and rezoned it to commercial. Wouldn't have happened if we had not come in. And so the current property owners ultimately developed nine acres on the site, and that's the nine acres to the north that you see there. We not only developed that nine acres, but we developed additional nineteen acres to the north. Uh, so the Fries, the Walgreens, all those buildings to the north, we developed. So if you want a commercial... So if you want a commercial developer, we're your guys. We came in and we did our duty. We zoned this property all commercial. We developed nine acres of it. We developed 19 acres to the north. Every single red button you see up there on that site plan, we developed. We're commercial developers. We know commercial. We wanted to develop this site as commercial. But basically, that was not to be. This remnant land has now been undeveloped for over 15 years. And we did our best. We, again, we wanted to develop it as commercial. Again, pardon the redundancy here, but that's our business. So, we wanted to develop it as commercial, and we tried. We've done our best, and this is basically what we've done so far. So, we've developed almost 30 acres of commercial development for the county in this immediate area. But this skipped over land just turned out to not be viable for commercial. Now, there are a variety of reasons for that. The irregular shape of the property makes it difficult. The distance and visibility from the commercial intersection, access problems, all contributed that we gave up. We just couldn't develop this last portion. So we're here today saying, we did our duty. We gave you a whole lot of commercial, and now give us the opportunity to go back and zone it, what it was originally master planned for, which was multifamily, except we're coming in with a much less dense product. If you look at recent history, uh, you've had several cases, three, maybe four, I've followed them, where developers come, have come in and said, we want to develop residential. And you have said, with every one of these cases, okay, we're going to let you do that, but we're going to exac something from you in return. And that exaction is, you got to do some commercial. And so, those properties have been zoned for multifamily, but the quid pro quo, the trade-off for that was, they had to do residential. I submit, uh, pardon the lack of humility, we've done exactly what you've required them to do, only the difference is, we've done it first. We've put the commercial in. You don't have to sit back and wait for us to do the commercial. We put it in. Nine acres on this piece, 19 acres on the piece to the north. So basically, we have done what you have asked the other developers to do. We're just basically one step of what you've required of your recent, uh, developers in the multifamily area. Next slide, please. The plan that is on, uh, no, I'm sorry, I'm a little ahead of myself. In fact, uh, as a vindication of my basic premise to you today, is that this property cannot be developed as, it's just not ripe to be developed as commercial. Found some recent vindication in the Sun Tan Valley rental recruitment and execution stat, strategy presentation that you hired, hired. I've got two slides from that presentation that are up before you. The, the location in this study, importantly, does not repeat, does not show our site as a viable commercial site. Again, vindicating what we've been saying, uh, in the earlier part of this presentation. Let's quickly go, uh, to the proposed rezoning. I'm going to cover this very quickly. So, we're proposing a build-to-rent product, uh, going back to the original zoning. This proposal is less dense than what could have been built under the CR5 zoning district 20 years ago. As staff notes in its report to you, multifamily housing stock is lacking in this area. There is a need for it. That's right in the staff report. Um, and we are increasing the amount of open space that is otherwise required by the MR district. And I'd like to just quote what I think is a real gem from the staff report. Quote, "The elements of the PAD will create a unique and innovative development that will foster many of the goals and objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan, and," quote, "create a community compatible with the surrounding subdivisions." Well, let's look at that plan. Um, I'm sorry that the most current plan wasn't in the presentation before, but, uh, I, I've circled in red the areas of inquiry. So, uh, we've got the light, the traffic light, sorry, that's not circled in red, but the traffic light is shown there. So we're proposing, importantly, at our expense, no expense to the county, parenthetically, I might add, that the light for the fries, uh, we also paid for at our full expense. We're willing to do it again here. So our plan shows the traffic light, then a little further to the north, we, uh, are putting in a right in, right out only. Then, consistent with what I said at the outset of my presentation, we've also made several changes to the plan for the benefit of the neighbors and, and for us as well. Uh, we incorporate, incorporated a 78-foot landscape buffer to the south, as shown on the plan. Um, we integrated and internalized the pool and clubhouse, so they were towards the center of the site, move it away from the existing residential. Uh, we agreed to eliminate access on Johnson Ranch Boulevard, which is the boulevard of the street that is to the west of our site. I need to make a little comment on that. Supervisor, um, Kavanaugh made a very salient point. He was concerned what happens if there's an accident and the traffic is blocked from going out on Hunt Highway. We are reserving that point along Johnson Ranch Boulevard as an emergency access point. We will have onsite a full-time property manager. And if there is an accident, then we can open up that emergency access to allow traffic to escape onto Johnson, Johnson Ranch Boulevard. And that will only be for the limited time that there is an accident. So it's consistent with what we've said all along, that we will provide only emergency access on Johnson Ranch Boulevard. That, I submit, is a major, uh, improvement to the neighborhood that would not exist, importantly, if the commercial were to stay there. Because the commercial then would have access along Johnson Ranch Boulevard, and there would be much more traffic. Also want to make a quick comment. Uh, one of the things that I think your staff appreciated about this plan is the traffic light we're proposing on Hunt Highway lines up with Red Street, which goes into this large subdivision immediately to the east. And there, right now, their only access out of there is on Hunt Highway. So they have to make a very dangerous turn coming out onto Hunt Highway. We not only help that safety problem, but we also increase the, uh, level of service there at that point from an F to a C. So it's a win-win situation, and it's a great benefit, not only to this project, but to the project immediately across the street and to the east. It's important for us, because we've made a commitment to the neighbors, that we would limit that access on Johnson Ranch Boulevard. And we've agreed to a stipulation that we'll honor that. Uh, and it's important to us that that stipulation be, if you so choose to approve this project, be incorporated in your approval. A quick comment, very briefly, uh, on the San Tan Special Area Plan that is up before you. It's a very important fact, as we reasoned together on this case, that, and this is noted in the staff report, this isn't Paul Gilbert speaking, but this proposal is consistent, entirely consistent with your adopted San Tan Valley Special Area Plan, which was adopted in 2018 by this board, and it had overwhelming public approval. Many of the other cases that have come before you have had to modify that plan. You notice that isn't part of our application. We don't have to modify it. Importantly, we are already approved under your existing plan that has been adopted for this site. We fit perfectly within the San Tan Valley Special Area Plan. Next slide. Traffic, you're going to hear, based on prior hearings and meetings we've had with the neighborhood, many comments on traffic. We want to spend a little bit of time with you focusing on that aspect of our application. Although, clearly, I think the most prominent concern we've encountered in the neighborhood is, is this issue. So, that's the reason we agreed to eliminate residential traffic from our project onto Johnson Ranch Boulevard and install a traffic light. It should be noted that the analysis we have had done, and our traffic engineer is here, Scott Kelly, by an independent traffic engineer, and that traffic study, incidentally, and importantly, has been reviewed by your staff. Um, and, uh, as far as we know, no, strike that. And your staff basically concurred with the conclusions of that traffic report. So, when you compare this project, residential, to a commercial development on the site, we picked an FAR of .20, which is a very conservative FAR. When you compare commercial juxtaposed against what we're proposing on this plan with a build-to-rent product, we're reducing traffic as much as 80% less than what would be extant were the project to be developed under the existing zoning on the project. Now, you're going to hear, well, but traffic with residential has high AM and high PMP, whereas commercial spreads it over the entire day. So we thought about that, and we had this analyzed also in our traffic report. And our traffic reports that, uh, there's an estimated 400 less cars on Hunt Highway at the AM peak with our project, and 570 less cars during the PMP hour. So, basically, if you want to solve the traffic problem, strike, that's a bit ambitious. I'm not going to contend we solved it. But if you're going to address the traffic problem, then our project has a significantly less impact on traffic on the residential, both on Hunt Highway and significantly on Johnson Ranch Boulevard. So, in conclusion, I got a smile out of some of you when I said conclusion, so I'll wrap it up very quickly.
I was a big grin.
All right. Key points. One, we are essentially proposing to revert the property back to the original zoning, less, impact with less density. The proposal is consistent with your adopted plan. We're not asking for any modifications. We fit right in perfectly with your adopted plan. Third, we have agreed with the neighbors to restrict access for our project to Johnson Ranch Boulevard, which was the number-one concern of many of the neighbors that are aligned along Johnson Ranch Boulevard. We will generate substantially, and this isn't just by a small amount, but substantially less traffic with this residential project than is extant now with the commercial project. The Planning Commission voted, by a vote of five to three, to recommend approval. And we believe that we have presented to you a very righteous case that is worthy of your approval. Would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Supervisor McClure.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, so, um, I'm sorry, my mind just went blank too long.
It's all right. Lot of pressure up here for all of us, yeah?
Um, yeah. So, I mean, the traffic to your site is, I, I get it, that there is somewhat less that you're going to have out of here, but that's also, when you're doing the peak morning and peak evening, that would just be dependent upon what businesses happen to be there. Because it could be a jack-in-the-box that had a constant flow of somebody coming through there. Right? I mean, that, that's going to adjust those numbers a little bit.
I'm going blank too.
Good, okay.
Pardon me.
No, so, but it depends, but you're, but you're talking about traffic flow of, if you have businesses there. And so you, I forget what it was. It was, you know, 585 or whatever it was. But, I mean, if you had different, depending on the business that was there, would depend, would make that number adjust up or down? I'm seeing a nod behind you, and I'm seeing a blank on your face, but I get it.
Okay. All right. Kurt, you, you answer that. I got to share my fee with him now.
Yes, it does depend on the types of businesses. There's a, the standard ITE that our traffic engineer used.
Okay.
I, I get your question.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm just, if those numbers aren't concrete, they're, they're an average.
They're an average, oh yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't...
That, that's okay. I didn't, I didn't state it well either, so it's okay.
Any, any other questions of the applicant at this time? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
My question still remains concerning that rear exit, and, you know, if it was in the original plan, if you lived there, it seems you have a right to park on the Johnson Boulevard, just like any other resident. So that, that's my comment, my question. Is it better suited to the residence in the apartment complex? And better for the traffic overall if that rear exit that is designated as emergency was a regular access?
So they'll, in other words, is it just emergency access only?
Yes, absolutely. No, it will not be used for the daily intercourse from the, uh, our project.
In and out.
It will only, I can't emphasize this enough, only be used for emergency access. And we'll have complete control over that.
Not the residence?
Not the residence.
Supervisor Miller?
Exit only?
No.
No.
It can go either way. Emergency. Emergency entrance?
It, it's an emergency access. So if a fire truck, for example, needs to come in there, it could come in off of Johnson Ranch Boulevard.
But if there's wrecks up on the highway, could it be used as an exit?
Yes, it could be...
Well, it can, so it's both directions?
Yes, that's correct. But it, it's a, I want to underscore, it's emergency only. It would only be taking place while the wreck was blocking the entrance for presumable... for presumably a short period of time. Thank you.
But it goes both ways?
Yes.
It can be used either way?
That's correct.
Okay. Kate, does that answer your question? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Well, it answers the question, but I think we look at these things that are already built and wonder who in the world approved this? And that's my thought, despite the negotiation of the builder and the recommendations of our staff. I think the gut feeling on this, maybe other supervisors agree or disagree, but it just makes sense to put an exit on the backside of this thing, so people can turn right and exit and not have to risk a left-hand turn. So, my argument is we could probably require an exit on Johnson.
Okay. Anybody else from the applicant? I think I will later on. I'll have some questions. But this is a public hearing as well, so if I could hear from some of the individuals that have filled out the paperwork. To begin with, Jan Bendah, did I say that right? Oh, there you are. And when you come up, if you could just give your full name and then general area where you live.
Is that part of the time? Well, you already said, my name is Jan Bendah. I live with my husband, Wayne, in Johnson Ranch. We moved here eight years ago. We liked the area, but we wanted to know more about it. So, the first thing we did was go to as many meetings as we could, HOA, Town Hall, Sizzling Seniors. We did all of those. Our first meeting, we were fortunate enough to meet you, Mr. Goodman. And you spoke about your dedication to San Tan Valley and your ongoing efforts to bring businesses to the community as well as focusing on improvements within the community. Every meeting since then that we attended where you were there, you emphasized the need for businesses to come to our community as well as a hope that we, as a resident, would do our best to patronize the existing and new businesses that would open up in San Tan Valley. You explained how tax revenue comes back to the community for our benefit. Currently, there is one major apartment complex going up next to Walmart. I couldn't get an exact count on the units, but there's a second one on the corner of Bella Vista and Ganzel that is scheduled to start. So, within the next year, year and a half, we're going to have over 500 units, which means at least 1,000 people coming in. And I don't know where the heck these people are supposed to come from to rent, but somebody must think that there's a big influx, a big reason for everyone to move to San Tan Valley. I don't know what it is. I know you've been working very diligently, Mr. Goodman, in bringing in new businesses to our area. More are still needed, especially as we grow. Through all your hard work and determination for the last eight years that I know of, you brought Home Depot. Thank you. My husband thanks you, okay? Kudos to you. Also, and maybe you don't know the exact count, but I called today. And according to the manager at Home Depot, there's a little over 200 people employed there. That's 200 people that didn't work in San Tan Valley. And she said that 95% of those people live in our community, live in San Tan Valley. Some of them may have transferred from other Home Depots, but they are now working in their community. That's great. Right now, if we in San Tan Valley want to go out for a nice dinner, someplace where you pay after you eat, not before, or want to go to a movie, or like my husband and I, we're going to be shopping for a mattress in Box Springs, we have to go to Queen Creek. We have to go to Gilbert. We have to go to Chandler. We have to go to Mesa. We have to leave. So, we don't have the opportunity to shop. Oh, I got to skip all those pages, sorry. Quickly, we don't know where all those people are going to come from to fill those apartments, but we definitely feel we need more businesses, not more homes or more.
Thank you, Jan.
Apartments, okay? Thank you.
I think most of us up here can read too, so.
Do you want me to pass this around?
Yeah, no.
Because I had to skip a whole page.
Yeah, if you want to give it to the clerk, because she can enter it in. Okay. Just to remind everybody, three minutes. I know a lot of you have been sitting here pretty much all day, yeah, so. But when you come up, if you'll just keep them, try to keep it within that three minutes, please. No, that's okay.
But I appreciate the thought.
You had some good number. You've been paying attention really good, I think, so I appreciate it. The next one I have is Jean Stockton.
Good afternoon. I did get here first thing this morning, but I would like to thank the chairman, the vice chair, and members of the board for taking the time to listen to us today. And I appreciate your commitment to our community and for giving us a chance to speak out. We have turned in, these 18 letters will mean that we have turned in 211 letters in opposition. Forty-four of them have been within 300 feet. We were required to turn in 22. I'm not sure the count that has come up with the county, if we do force that into supermajority vote, but I'm hopeful that it did. One thing that I just learned today is that the emergency exit would allow people that live in that community access in and out of Johnson Ranch if there was an accident. We were under the impression that that emergency exit would be used for police and fire trucks only. Everyone here probably knows of the significant chokehold that we have at the roundabout. Allowing people to come in and out of that emergency exit goes completely against what we've heard in the past. I'm not going to read everything that I have written here. I'm going to try to just skip over it quickly. Commercial property in this part of Pinellas County is becoming an endangered species. 1997 is not 2024. We already have the people. We now need the businesses. Many of us here support the incorporation of San Tan Valley, and effort is currently underway. As we chisel away at the property that's already zoned commercial, it's taking away the opportunity for the San Tan Valley community to be economically viable should they choose to incorporate. We need businesses where high school kids can go to work after school. They can't afford cars. They can't afford gas. They can't drive 30, 40 miles to get a job. We need places to keep those young people involved and off the streets and not vandalizing. Our community screams for an opportunity to go sit down and eat. We have 20,000 people in Johnson Ranch. That's more people than they have in Florence or close to, and more than half of our people are not incarcerated. We would be able to use those businesses if they were built. And I implore you to please consider seriously voting no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom O'Toole. I live basically right across from this proposed complex. I know we only have three minutes, so first I start, please vote no, okay? This is imperative for all of us, okay? Now, there's, I know the council will come up here and try to refute some of the things that he said, or I'm going to say right now. First of all, I'll say, we do not need a third traffic light. That would be within a quarter of a mile. You'll have one on the corner of Hunt Highway and Bella Vista, and whatever, in front of Fries and the car wash, and then another one, maybe 100, 200 yards down. That's three and basically a quarter of a mile. No one wants it. And I would say to Mr. Gilbert, okay, those people who you interviewed, that large subsection, that's not large, okay? Maybe 100 homes, which I even doubt there's that many. But anyway, did you get any signatures, those people who wanted yes? And if you did, did you ask them the question, we're going to put a light there, but for that, there's going to be apartments of 180 apartments. Did you ask that question? I would tend to say, no, he did not. So, therefore, he probably only asked, well, we'll put the light in, okay? Now, speaking of the light, yeah, she could only make a left turn only, okay? And as Jean just said, since I live right there on Johnson Ranch Boulevard, I could look out my sliding glass doors, and my house backs up to Johnson Ranch Boulevard. If there's an accident, that roundabout is going to take forever to get through. And that's not probably the way it was developed, okay? So, once again, we do not need a third light. And if it is, I hope if anyone is driving on Johnson Ranch Boulevard in a year or two, that they don't get stuck. And I said, why is there three lights in a quarter of a mile? Because you're all going to complain. Now, I do want to know about, who did the traffic study, okay? And when was it done? Was it done in January, when there's a lot of people here, including your snowbirds and Canadians? Or was it done in June, when a lot of people have left the community? Mr. Gilbert always said that he had many, many meetings. Well, I went to two. Two is only a couple. That's not many, many meetings, okay? And the first meeting that they had was in late May of 2022, when, once again, there was a lot of people that were not there, okay? I know my time has almost run out, but again, we do not need lights, three lights within a quarter of a mile. Once again, as I kept hearing, since we're all here all day, it's about the opportunities for commercial business. It brings employment, as Jean just said, people at Home Depot. One thing I would, if you could ask them, do we get a guarantee that if they do build these residential apartments, that they're not going to impose in our amenities, meaning our pools, our pitch-and-pot golf course? Because if it is, then we should be charging those residents for our amenities that we pay for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Toole. Next up is Daniel A. Adrave.
He's not here because he had to go to work.
Okay, all right. But it's noted, we've got.
I can read his letter, though, if that's admissible. Or I can give it to the court.
Turn it in to the record there.
He did want to say, we would like to have a family casual restaurant, like at Applebee's.
Okay, thank you. Next up is William Bertschiger? Oh, can you, okay, okay, Bertschinger.
My name is William Bertschinger. I live in Johnson Ranch. I'm here with my wife. I was thinking we should fix the system. We'll both talk for three minutes, but I won't do that. It's interesting that Mr. Gilbert oftentimes says, you know, certain words like "absolutely", "honestly", and so on. And I remember the meeting I attended where, with the community, and he committed to us that he would be there till midnight if we needed to be. And I was really upset when he closed the meeting before midnight, because none of us, I don't believe, were done with our concerns about that time. My biggest concern I wanted to address today is the amount of accidents on Bella Vista and Johnson Ranch. That section, now that Mr. Gilbert admitted that he was, they were behind this design in the first place. I thought it was classic that the gentleman mentioned that Hunt Highway used to be a dirt road and was tough to drive. I will tell you that Hunt Highway today, even with the four lanes, is a tough place to drive. My wife and I have had an accident. We weren't at fault, but nearly caused us death. But luckily, my wife only has ongoing problems, but still with us. So, Hunt Highway is a dangerous place. We don't need any more lights and traffic and everything else. I can't imagine the amount of problems additional lights will cause. And I know experts will tell us otherwise. The other thing is, why do we need more apartments? They're a bad investment for people, okay? They get no equity out of that. I know people that develop them make money, but my kids, who rent apartments, I always tell them, I say, you know, that's not the way. You get nothing out of them. Short-term, maybe, but long-term, they're not great. The last thing, since I have a yellow time, data analysis. It's important that when we look at data, to know the timing of when that data is. Oftentimes, they'll claim that apartments don't bring in crime and reduce values and stuff. It's timing. If they look at one to two years, that may be true. But when you look at 10 years, the data will tell you something totally different. It will tell you that your property and crime and other issues will come up because of that. Because whether they like it or not, these people that develop initially disappear over time. I don't know why, but my experience and where I've lived before, every time, after about 10 years, the original people are gone, sold out, new people in, and it just goes down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker I have is Christine Lane. And there's a few more here. She's coming up. But just remind everybody, when the yellow light comes on, that doesn't mean punch it and get through the red light. It means slow down, wrap it up.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. I am Christine Lane. I live in Johnson Ranch and have since April of 2023. Interesting that the developers' representative have stated previously that they can't find any businesses to build in that area. Well, just heard Mr. Gilbert say, because they gave up. Why did they give up? What's the actual real reason for not finding businesses to take up that commercial space? Granted, since 1997, things have changed. This area has grown and changed. We need businesses to support this ever-growing community. Like you said, Mr. Goodman, you're all supportive of having our community grow, bring businesses in. We need that. So, what's the real reason for not finding businesses? Is it bad marketing? Is it limiting the scope of who they asked, what they reached out to? Not venturing outside of an established portfolio? Like somebody mentioned, Applebee's might be kind of nice for a family-sit-down restaurant. Some of the businesses being opened or proposed not far from Johnson Ranch include things like Handel's Ice Cream, Sephora, Nothing Bunt Cakes, Hobby Lobby, Cafe Zupas, Portillo's, Chick-fil-A, Winco, McCowes, Wingstop, Soda Rush, Savvy's Bar and Grill, Matty Joe's, Blend's Barber Shop, Carefree Covered RV Storage, CrossFit Solid Go's, Raising Canes, pop drinks, goes on and on, Dutch Brothers, Christian Brothers Automotive. We have Filiberto's, a couple of them. Pinky's Nails, Domino's, Some Burrows, and San Tan Hot Dogs. The developer says he cannot attract businesses. Is it because of the lack of population? We have a lot of people in Johnson Ranch. Johnson Ranch has nearly the same population as the town of Florence. When we moved out here, I was shocked that it was so big. Of approximately 20,000 people in Johnson Ranch alone, none of us are incarcerated, as we stated before. There are several businesses in Florence that are thriving, even though more than half of their population does not frequent their own establishments. Is the problem with the layout of the property? Instead of selling the Hunt Highway-facing property, which, again, I don't know about you, but another stoplight within a quarter mile ain't going to cut it. Why not, you know, first create a frontage road or access to all the businesses? Is it possible? Sure. Is it more challenging? Sure. Maybe the developer needs to carve out a better path for businesses to be built on the backside of that existing business. Who wouldn't build a sit-down restaurant in the community that is in close proximity to at least 40,000 residents? San Tan Heights, Rancho Bella Vista, Rancho Bella Vista South, Johnson Ranch, Copper Basin, and don't forget the influx from the new Stella Apartments close to Walmart.
Okay.
That will be leasing apartments before the end of the year.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Please vote no.
Okay, the next up is Betsy Lawrence. Is she here?
I'm Betsy Lawrence.
I'm Betsy Lawrence, and I live in Cambria Acateo, but I'm here to support Johnson Ranch's vote for no for this development. Just recently, I have been affected negatively by rezoning and by the developer promising one thing and delivering something totally unacceptable. Some of you may have caught my interview on Arizona Family concerning a wall that my backyard linked up to the Lynx Estate. I now look, rather than a golf course, I have a cinder block wall six feet high, three feet from my open view fence. I don't want that happening in any shape or form for Johnson Ranch. Also, there is another development of apartments being developed up by Acateo and Gansell. So I don't see any need for apartments, more apartments down on Hunt Highway. My concern for Hunt Highway is the, in traffic, we have plenty of snowbirds. Again, I would like to know when the traffic studies were made, because the snowbirds bring in an extreme amount of traffic, which, again, I will face on Gansell, and I don't want Johnson Ranch to be faced with on Hunt Highway. Whoever said it would be a great idea to add more traffic to Hunt Highway in Bella Vista, the intersection has 1.82 accidents per day, as pointed out in the planning and zoning meeting in July. There are 181 residents being added. That will equate to 200 to 600 more vehicles passing through that intersection, which will again cause the possibility of more accidents. So I, again, here to reap, just to throw in my support and my voice to voting no for the development being proposed in Johnson Ranch. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Shelley Frazier.
I am a resident of Johnson Ranch. And by the way, the community for Mr. Gilbert across Red Road is that is also Johnson Ranch. My story kind of goes, actually, I probably should have been up here before, Ms. Lawrence, but Ms. Betsy Lawrence, who's the lady who just spoke, is a lady who lives in Santan, semi-close to our development, but a little bit of ways. Anyhow, her property, she bought it, no one told her what was coming, no one told her what to expect, no one took the time to ensure, Ms. Betsy Lawrence, about the adverse effect that the development, approved development behind her would do to her well-being. Key words I want to place in your head is adversely affected by the approved development. When Betsy woke up one morning, she saw the cinder block wall four foot on the other side of the view fence. She was devastated, and I agree, I would be devastated as well, because now my view fence is now, I'm looking at a block wall through a beautiful view fence. How could this happen? Well, she talked to several people, and one person told her it was supposed to be, it was going to be a park, and then, but she's still stuck with this mess. So what was approved in the past can't be changed, but the way the developments are being approved without realizing the impact on roads, intersections, existing businesses, and existing neighborhoods, and the people who live there, needs to be taken into consideration, not only for the current date and for time, but for the unforeseeable future. Does the Board of Supervisors approve developments without considering the detrimental impact it will have on the existing communities? I know several of you guys have been to the site. I know possibly some of you who live, who are a little further out, probably have not been to the site. But the question is, is do any of the supervisors take the time to survey or in or visit the areas before approving or denying? In actuality, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission openly admitted in a planning and zoning meeting that he did not know where the sanctuary, which is what it used to be called, development is, and yet he voted yes. He had no clue where he was talking, where this was at, it was just, it fell in the lines according to planning and zoning requirements. So the main question is, is anybody listening? And most importantly, does anybody care? We care in the community what's happening around us, and that's why we have been, been to a lot of these meetings. I know you guys have seen me at probably every Board of Supervisor meeting around in the last couple of years. So that's just my two cents in.
Thank you. Ms. Jen Wendell? Mary Chapman?
Mary had to leave, and she left.
Okay, if you could enter that. And Burdette, or Burdel Jarvis? Okay, and Scott Kelly?
Scott Kelly is our traffic engineer. I'll have him speak in my everybody.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody else wishing to speak that hasn't spoke? Okay. I'm going to now close public hearing. And applicant, do you want to come forward? I have some questions, but I think most, I'm going to have some questions of our staff as well, so. Anybody else that might have some questions? Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Lot to cover here. I'll try to do it very quickly. The constant theme we've been hearing is that there is a need for businesses. We don't dispute that as an overall concept, but I think we have quite effectively and empirically demonstrated that we brought you 28 businesses right at this very corner, this very piece of property. And we've tried, and we, basically, the market's gone dry at this location. It's not a primary location, the remaining piece of the property. I thought it would be very instructive to have our broker, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mike Ord, just spend a couple of minutes and tell you his efforts to reach out to many of the names that the people who have spoken in opposition have referenced has potential sites on our site. So with your permission, I'll ask Mr. Ord to come forward.
Two minutes? That's it?
Mr. Chairman, supervisors, I'll be even shorter than two minutes. Uh-oh. That was less than two minutes.
I meant two seconds.
That was two seconds. All right, I'm done. No, ironically, many of the businesses that were recently, well, first of all, my name's Mike Ord. I'm at 4724 North 24th Street, Phoenix. I'm president of DL Slaughter Company. We're a large commercial brokerage firm that we do commercial brokerage work, and we've done probably over 30 deals in the last, you know, 18 months in Santan Valley, or in Pinale County, Santan Valley area. So we're very familiar with the trade areas, the dynamics and the supply and demand of commercial users, both at other sites and sites just like this. As has been demonstrated, we have a challenge on this site attracting commercial users here. Many of the deficiencies of the site have been elaborated upon. The intersection alone, if you just look at it, it deadens into the neighborhood. That's a strike against it for businesses. The other strike against it is that there's been already almost 50 businesses at the four corners that have already located here. You get into an issue there where you start to duplicate and triplicate uses, which then, if you force too much commercial at an intersection, you then start to threaten the health and viability of the businesses that are already there. And that may even already start to happen at intersections like this, where you don't have all cylinders firing, so to speak. The other thing that we find at sites like this, and especially at this site, is that there are other more attractive commercial sites in the trade area that garner the attention of the users that we would most likely want to go after. Many of the users that were mentioned earlier, ironically, we've had conversations with many of those businesses in recent history. They've opted instead to go elsewhere where there might be an anchor on the site, there might be better access, there might be better visibility, more proximity to the intersection, or even more population density. I think I'm at my limit, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, you are.
So I'm going to stop there.
Boy, you stopped at that red light really well. I'm impressed. Okay.
I hope that answers the question. Do you want me to continue with my rebuttal, or do you have?
I think you have some other ones, right? I mean, you had some other points you wanted to make.
Yes. In fact, let's bring them up now. We've had some questions about the traffic engineer and the traffic study. We've got Scott Kelly. He can tell you about the traffic study, when it was done, and the procedure that he used.
So the traffic counts were collected in March of 2022 on a Thursday. It's fairly typical time in the spring and fall to collect traffic counts. That's when you have roughly normalized traffic. We don't want to collect counts on, say, Black Friday, when you have really high counts. So what we aim to do is collect counts when school is in session, there's no half-days, and also when it's in the spring or fall, where we have fairly normal patterns of traffic. So that, I think, answers the question as to when the counts were collected that were used in the study.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for him? Okay. I have a question for staff, if you could come up. There's a few questions I have for you in regards to all of this. There was a mention, as Mr. Gilbert was up here talking about, many of the things that they're going to do in relation to traffic. We have a policy that the county, any impact whatsoever that is done on traffic, the developer has to pay for that. Is that correct? So this is really not a special favor, is what I'm getting at. This is per them having to do these certain things, correct? Because of the impact of the traffic?
So we'll defer to our county engineer who worked with the effort.
Oh, I didn't see him back there. There you, come on up, Chris.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Chris Wanamaker, county engineer. Yes, you're right. Your question, any, that's the purpose of the traffic impact analysis, is identify infrastructure that's needed to mitigate the impacts of the traffic generated by the project. And so with this particular project, you need a traffic signal because of the primary access, where it's located, and the amount of traffic generated. So in order to serve this development, you have to have the signal. They're also going to be building a turn lane, a dedicated right turn lane, to serve this access as well. So that's another infrastructure component that's needed to help mitigate the traffic.
Okay. And I wanted you to come up here because I wanted to make the point that we, as a county, have, we've passed this off to the developers and said, this is your responsibility. You want to do business here at this location, you've got to mitigate any kind of the traffic issues, and certain things has to be done. And that's, and we've taken that course, so it's not really, this is per our ordinances, this is per our stipulations that we put on these developers, correct?
Yes, that's correct, Chairman.
Okay. That's one. I just, yeah, I really wanted to point that out, very emphasize that, because we, as a county, have been, we've been criticized in the past because we haven't put these kind of restrictions on these developers to really address the impacts and everything else of traffic. So I appreciate that. The other thing is, I, and thanks, Chris, you might have, does anybody have any questions of the traffic?
Not traffic, no.
Okay. I have, I asked James Smith, he's our economic development director, to pull some information for me, and I appreciate, she left, and the young lady that came up and spoke and talked a lot about my position, that I've been, and I've been pretty consistent about it, and I try to stay consistent with it. In 2022, we paid, I believe it was about $250,000 for an economic study, right? Retail leakage that we had done in October of 2022. And the numbers at that time, the study showed that nearly $900 million in retail services, restaurant sales, within a 50-mile radius, were loosely, which is loosely defined as Santan Valley, there was only $215 million was being served by Santan Valley area businesses at that time, and subject to Pinale County taxes. Meaning that there was hundreds of millions of dollars that were flowing out of our county into Maricopa County. And it was assisting and helping them build their roads, but it wasn't doing any good for us here. And this is an argument that I've been holding strong with for a long time, since this study came out, and that was a big reason what motivated us to go after Home Depot and other retail outlets like that. And your client, I would agree, has done a substantial amount of commercial development here. Some Burrows was mentioned, that's your property, that that area, Taco Bell, or not Taco Bell, it's Jack in the Box. Somebody mentioned Jack in the Box. Jack in the Box is there. Anyway, he's done a considerable amount. I'm not going to disagree with that. But the one thing is, let me go on with this information. The data showed dollars flowing out of Santan Valley in all categories. Motor vehicle dealers and parts, general merchandise stores totaled over $100 million in total sales, gas stations, building materials, garden equipment, food stores, food service, restaurants, all totaled over $50 million. Not all of these would fit on this site, but many could. It's important to note, the county has experienced growth of 12% in that time from 431,000 residents, and now we are, I know we're over half a million, but in, but in 2017, we had 484,000 residents. That represents a 12% growth. At the time of the study, there was approximately 4,800 square feet of vacant space over three spaces. That was it. So we're talking about building office complexes and things of that nature. That's how much we lack. It also showed that we need, I think it was about 142,000 office space that was designated in this study, that we need in this area, in the Santan Valley area. A lot of our professionals and people like that, we have to travel. I know that whenever the impact, the analysis done on, on the traffic analysis, and more traffic is generated because of commercial as opposed to residential, that's an argument we've been hearing over and over again, when somebody wants to rezone a particular area from commercial to high-density apartment complexes. The problem is, if we don't have the retail outlets, or the office complexes, or the office space available, where do they go? They leave our county. They go over into Maricopa County. They shop over there. And, you know, I think Queen Creek years ago, they did a comprehensive study on what they were doing, and thus, the marketplace came as a result of all that. And they spent money doing that. Now, we, as a county, we're doing some things right now, and we're working on some things with the state land department. But for me, as I'm looking at this and the analysis of all of this, I've, can you, Brent or Glenn, can you guys speak to how many office or apartment complexes we've approved, total units? Can you address, can you tell me that right now? And I know for a fact, there's only a handful that are being built right now, and there's still many more to be constructed.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would hate to venture a guess, because I could be off by an order of magnitude. I know that we've taken five cases in the last six months, but that's county-wide. I know that we've taken five cases in the last six months, but that's county-wide, that's not just in the Santan area. But like you said, really, the only one that's actively under construction is Stella, which is near Walmart. But I don't know the number of multifamily projects or the number of units.
Okay, yeah, there's one on Gansel, right near the railroad tracks that's being done right now, too. And I think there's been three or four that are, and then, obviously, there's the one that's for rent, right there in, with the young lady that spoke earlier, that they build the block wall right there. And that whole area right there is now, except for 13 acres, has been rezoned to high-density, right? Okay. So, you know, we have a lot of these units that are coming right now, that I'm seeing that we, you know, it's almost like all the solars that we've had coming to us as a board. And we've almost had to put a, you know, we need to do it, we need to really do an analysis on everything. And I think we're at that, that point right now, for me personally, as I'm looking at this, that we really need to get a, wrap our hands around this, get our, you know, get our breath over this as we look at it. So Supervisor Miller?
First, I got it. What's the pivot point of your 50-mile radius?
He's not here to tell me.
I mean, that's totally, that changes everything for me.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, but to answer your question, we've had many of these individuals come, and they've expanded their, their retail outlet into Queen Creek, into Maricopa County, is what they've done.
So they've left Pinal County?
They've left, yes.
And they were here, and they left?
No, they were never here.
They never came?
But the study itself, any of the developers that come here and want to turn commercial into residential, they've argued that there's, within this mile radius, there is all these retail outlets. They've made that argument. But the reality is, they're not in Pinal County.
Yeah, well.
We're losing those retail cells.
I'll, you want my?
Yeah, I think at this point, we have questions of the applicant, or even to the staff, but I think this is an opportunity to...
There might be some questions that arise out of here. But I just, you know, one thing I heard, sit-down restaurants. So I just pulled up Google Map. I count 14 restaurants in the Santan area, sit-down restaurants. A lot of them on Hunt Highway. So it's not like there's not restaurants, 14. I didn't think there'd be that many. That's a decent number.
Are they classifying Taco Bell as a sit-down restaurant?
No, no, it's no fast foods. That's not, not one fast food that I can tell.
No, I'll be comments over.
So anyway, that's, I just punched in restaurants, and 14 showed up, and I looked at them, and I don't see a fast food restaurant in them, so. Anyway, as far as the retail, I got tons of retail available in Casa Grande, because retail's dead because of Jeff Bezos. Everybody buys stuff online now. I mean, it is just a dying, if you own commercial property and you have a vacant spot, it's tough to get people in. They're giving people free rent for a year at a mall in Casa Grande, just to get people to move in. I think that whole thing, and I think that also applies to the office space. So many people are working from home now. The office space, I mean, there's probably not seen so much in rural areas like Pinal County, but there's places in Phoenix, and there's places in big cities where complete office buildings are vacant, because they just have everybody working from home. So the market is changing faster than we can really kind of keep up with it in that One of the things that came out of the last study that we did for the Santan area was diverse types of housing. Everything from apartments to almost ranch-style type houses. You want a real diverse market that way for the people. The cost of housing has just gone skyrocketed. There's, for people to be able to buy homes now, is almost an oxymoron to think that there's ever going to be affordable housing. I don't know how we'll ever turn that around. But that's, that's another, that's another discussion for another day. So I would say, I don't know how many years this land has set vacant, but if it was that attractive for commercial, I think somebody would have snatched it and built commercial on there. From you, that circle you showed, looks like there's a lot of commercial right in that concentrated area already. So maybe it's saturated there. You're not going to put commercial units behind commercial units because of the way that, that strip runs in there. You might still get a couple more commercial units out on the Hunt Highway side of things, but behind that, that, all that land, you're not going to put commercial property facing Johnson Parkway. That doesn't make any sense. So it's just, it's an awkward piece of land to try and develop. There's already residential all the way around it. It's, and I think you're mitigating the traffic as much as you can with the drive, with the two exits and entrances out on Hunt Highway, the emergency exit on Johnson Parkway, and the stoplight, probably doing about as best as you can with that traffic analysis and the scenario there. And if it was commercial, it's going to create just as much traffic, if not more, if the businesses are successful, because they're going to generate trips as well. And that's how site locators work on understanding whether they can put in another store, another retail operation, another, they want traffic. Walmart does not go out on a road that does not have traffic. Home Depot does not go out on a road that doesn't have traffic. They do the traffic counts first, and when the traffic counts get to a certain level, then they come in. I've watched it for years. I know, I know how they go about it, and when they pull the trigger on them. So I just, I just, you know, there's a, there's a lot of growing pains with Santan because of how it was developed 20 years ago, but we're kind of where we're at, and I think if it's, and this retail thing is changing so fast, I mean, you go to the store now, and they don't have product on the shelf. You know why? Because they don't have traffic coming in to buy it. You go online, you pick it up, you have it delivered in two days. And that's the way of the future. And so I think it's just a unique piece of property, and I think this is probably is the best fit for that, as you'll find, in the near future.
And I disagree with that. I think that, I believe that, for instance, the office space alone, we have a tremendous need out here. We have professionals and so on and so forth. And so I think with this particular project, I mean, you do make an interesting point. Poor planning. Poor planning. If this would have been planned properly, the access and access would have been a lot better than what it is right now. And that little piece would have been put and had access to it. So staff, we need to really look at these projects and things of that nature when they come in for us, and to make sure, especially a commercial piece of property, we need to make sure, looking into the future, and I'm giving direction here from me personally, is that, but I think Miller hit the right key word, poor planning. And that's been the story of Santan Valley from the very beginning. And we've willy-nilly done it, did it, done it. I'm from Arizona, so I apologize. My wording isn't always correct. That's my wife. But the bottom line is, is that this stuff needs to be thought out further than what we've been thinking about. That's why we brought on guys like Brent and other individuals to help us look at this from a municipality perspective. So I would agree with you. It's poor planning on that part, when it comes to our traffic and analysis there. I disagree as far as, you know, sit-down restaurants. You know, it's easy for you to say that, Supervisor Miller, because you live in Casa Grande. You were on the city council there, and you know that you have a lot more amenities than the people in Santan Valley will ever have until we start seeing some changes within the area. Supervisor Sertie, you were the mayor of Patchy Junction. They have a lot more amenities, and we're a lot bigger than any of those. I look at Maricopa, the city of Maricopa. They are loaded with retail, and we're a bigger community than they are. And so we've got to look at it from, we just have to be thinking a little bit better about this stuff, and we've offered to, I'm going to give you a chance to rebuttal, okay? And that's one thing about us, we're good friends, we can still, we can still, we're like brothers, I should say, and we can still have disagreements and duke it out, and then still love each other at the end of the day. But bottom line is, I just think that some of these things, as they come before us, we really need to incorporate in our Santan Valley area plan, this document, which is our economic development document, the one, the study that we had, so that everybody has a better outlook as to what we're dealing with. I think that needs to be incorporated in that. And I never hear that this document is even included in any of our Santan, Plan Santan stuff. So I really think it needs to be there. Supervisor McCleary, and I'm going to give him a chance to...
I just have a quick question. I mean, we're looking at all this area here, and so just, and this is a little off-subject, but right northwest, northwest of this property, there's a big area that goes up to that traffic circle. Is that also a commercial space? Is that yours?
No.
Is it a commercial space?
I don't know. I mean, it's just vacant. It looks like it's set up to be commercial. I'm just trying to figure out, hmm, all the area around there, so.
What, do you know what that is?
It's Johnson Ranch, it's a vacation area.
Oh, it's a retention area?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I think it's drainage.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what, okay.
That makes sense.
All right, Supervisor Miller, come at me, baby.
Well, the leakage thing is interesting. If Queen Creek is now into Pinal County, correct?
Yes.
Am I correct? So a store that's in Pinal County, in Queen Creek, and is it, we still get our penny?
Yes.
We still get our penny.
Absolutely.
So, so that, you know, it's not total, but...
They've helped it out, to your, to your point, they've helped it out substantially.
Sure. And if you order online, and you buy a product, we get our penny. We still get our money. So, and I just can tell you that the retail business is on the declining, and the site locations are very, very specific for types of retail sales. So Jo-Ann's, they, you know, I don't know what their parameters are, but they have it, and they know what it is, and they know how many rooftops they need, and they know in a radius, how many people are going to come to Jo-Ann's on any given day. They know it down to a T. And every one of these retail operations have that stuff all figured out, because they don't make it if they don't have it figured out. So again, I, and if it's poor planning, why should we put the burden on these people because of something that was a past sin on somebody else's part? This is an awkward piece of property. I think it is a good use for it at this point in time. I don't see where you're going to get any more retail in there that would be beneficial to the community. And, and apartment units, houses, they all pay property tax. It will generate revenue for the county. It's not like a house doesn't have a value that, or an apartment has a, doesn't have a value that we tax. And that's ongoing for a long, long, long time, and it's consistent, and it typically goes up in value, so we always are generating a little bit more revenue with it every year that it increases in value. So I never see it as a total, it's not a zero-sum game. Now, just because it's not commercial, and it goes to residential, we will be collecting property tax on those units as we go forward, so.
But I might, I might add two things. Number one, we do not use property taxes to build roads, and we have a big deficiency...
Well, we don't necessarily use sales tax to build roads. We use, that all goes into the coffers, and we divide it up as best we can.
Okay.
So are we having a debate now? We need a new debate moderator?
Supervisor, Supervisor Cat?
I thought I was here to give my rebuttal, and I still haven't given it.
Well, I know, but I'm getting tired, and I just want to, let's get this thing done, right? Supervisor Sertie, do you have something?
Amazon is the enemy.
Yeah.
And California. But, so, you know, you look at those businesses that are there, their coffee, their salons, their break shops, there are things that you can't order online. And being the mayor of a town, yeah, a lot of Office Max, they're all struggling, you can order all that stuff online. So it's the service industry and the disposable coffee things like that that you need to grab on your way in. Other than that, yeah, I wish we'd have done something about Amazon years ago to stop it, but it's out of hand now.
Yeah. How long is your applicant old net property again?
What, 20 years?
That's a particular one, about 18 years.
18 years? So, and that still goes back to the planning aspect of it. I mean, he's the property owner. We talk about the deficiency in the planning part, and so I, you know, the way it's laid out, and I know as customer, as individuals wanted your property and things of that nature, you try to accommodate them and so on and so forth, but if you had some kind of a site plan, would say, this is a location, this is a location, pretty much like what's Home Depot, and that area right there has done, and over at Walmart, they have designated areas of what can be what. And if something like that could have been done, and, and, yeah, that's all hindsight, but, you know, you want to put it on the blame of somebody for not poor planning, it's, I'm sorry, but that's part of the issue, part of the problem. And I get it, that you've got that piece of property, and you're trying to, you know, I get the economics of it all. I do. And I get the economics of all of this, but the bottom line is, is me personally, sitting on this dais, I have a responsibility to the people in Santan Valley, the ones that live there, and the ones that are going to come. And whenever we looked, look at the retail leakage, that we can and should be generated from the most populated area, we're even bigger than Queen Creek. And thank goodness for Queen Creek, when they annexed into our county, they have brought a tremendous amount of, of commercial property and retail. And thank goodness for, you know, that, they've helped break things up, to your point, they really, literally have, to where that region and that area is starting to produce in that area. We are in the most consumed area in the entire county. We have the most consumers, and yet, most of our consumers, all those dollars go outside of our county completely. So that, we've got to reverse this somehow, we've got to look at this in a better and more effective way than what we have in the past. And I know we have a lot of things that we've been talking about, working with, our staff has, and so I'm going to shut up now, and did you want to add one more thing, or two more things? And that's it, two more things.
All right. Well, I was acclimated to being given a full rebuttal, but I'll try to condense it. Let me rebut you, if I might be so bold, Mr. Chairman. First of all, we agree 100% on the light. We're paying for it. We paid for the traffic light up at Fry's. So we're not asking the county for any handout. We're paying our fair share to solve an existing problem. Secondly, you waved that piece of paper, and you talk about your study that you had. Your study that you're quoting doesn't show our parcel as a parcel for potential commercial in the future. So if you want to use that study, let's use it. Our parcel isn't on it. Next, you've heard our efforts to try to develop this as commercial. Candidly, we make more money if we could develop it as commercial, but we don't make any money if we can't develop it, and that's unfortunately the posture we're in today. We did our duty. We brought you 28 commercial projects in the immediate area. So when you say, well, if we'd drawn up a plan and shown this and that, we did. We were there. We really came through for the county. You should be thanking us, because we brought you 20... You should be thanking us, because we brought you 28 stores that are active, vibrant, but we're saying we can't do anymore. If, we're experts, not me, but my clients, we are in the retail business. That's all Mr. Or does. It's all Mr. Davidson does. And yet, we can't make it work, and that's just the fact of life. So, that's why. Couple of points, we were asked, well, did we have any neighborhood meetings? Did we reach out to the neighborhood? People are saying, I didn't attend enough. I don't know how important that is to you, but you should be aware that we have sent more than 1,000 letters. We have had, been in 70 different homes of people that live next door to this project. We've had three neighborhood meetings. 100 attended the first, 40 attended the second, and 80 attended the third. We gave increased notice of this meeting that we weren't otherwise required to do at the request of the staff, and we've knocked on over 200 doors in the neighborhood. It cannot be said that we haven't reached out to the neighborhood, and the plan that you see before you today was a plan that came about because of suggestions from the neighborhood. The next point was that, well, we don't need apartments, and I've heard that constantly. Your staff report says there is a need for this type of unit in the county. May I also submit that when you say you need more employment, you've got to have a place for that employment to live. Build to rent has been a very popular answer to that question. So, we have done what we need to do. We've been good citizens. This property, for all the reasons that we've regaled you with earlier, is not appropriate for commercial. We have tried, and again, that's what we do. Pardon me for saying so, but I think we know a lot about commercial and where it could be located. And we've got a lot of expertise behind this. When we stand before you and look you in the eye and unequivocally tell you, it won't work. We can't make it work for the reasons that we've given. So, for these reasons, and the fact that we are, last point I'll make, we are addressing the biggest problem the neighbors have talked about, and that is traffic. I don't understand where the neighbors are coming from when they say, well, we got too much traffic on Hunt, so build more commercial and bring more traffic. The logic of that is, obviously, doesn't make sense. We are helping the traffic problem. The last point I want to make is somebody said, well, that neighborhood across the street on the east side of Hunt Highway, do they want that light? Did you go to there? You bet your bottom dollar we did, and we got a lot of people that told us, we are thrilled to have that traffic light. The situation is currently intolerable and dangerous, and we're solving that. As your traffic engineer, or your, I'm sorry, your county engineer made it very clear, there's a need for that light. We're satisfying that need. The bottom line is, this is a win-win-win. It's a win for the neighbors, it's a win for the county, and importantly, it's a win for the person that owns the property. And then, in closing, I will just say, we have, we are what are called legacy builders. We are going to, Mr. Cohen is here, he's hearing me say this, has authorized me to tell you this, we're going to build this ourselves. We're ready to build that, because we believe in it, and we know it will work. And if we're in charge of it, it will be done well, and it will work, and it will be quality. So, we think we've made a very strong case that would support your support for this position.
So...
Thank you.
So, I have one question.
Just one?
Yeah.
All right.
I think it's a pretty good question.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah. Based on what you've just said, and this property is not resellable for retail, does that mean you're done doing business in Pinell County?
No, I can answer that unequivocally. We love Pinell County. We're doing business here all over Pinell County. Mr. Orde indicated, how many projects did you say?
We've done over 30 deals in the last...
No, but I'm not talking about the past. I'm talking about going into the future. Are you saying you're done because there's no more to do? Because we're almost out of commercial property.
No, we're saying we're not, we're done for commercial on this piece of property, but not for the rest of Pinell County. We love being here, so...
But you're going to have a hard time finding the commercial property right now. That's my whole point.
Actually, there are a legion of opportunities for commercial in the county. I'm not as well-versed as I should be, but Mr. Orde has shared with me all the potential development that is coming to Pinell County.
I'd love to see those.
But you've got anchor tenants that will attract the kind of people that need to go on our site, and that's what we don't have here. So, there's plenty of opportunities. We're big on Pinell County. We're here to stay.
Okay.
We love you, we're going to love you a lot more if you approve this case. Thank you.
Well, I won't, my, my love for you doesn't have a stipulation on it, so...
That's good, Mr. Chairman, real quick. How many units are going in here? Would go in here, sorry.
Approximately 180.
180, and the, and the space across Hunt Highway, I counted them, you know, I think it was 147 homes in there, just as a...
That's about, that would be about right.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other discussion, any more questions? We spent a lot of time on this one, sorry. Okay, do we have a motion going forward?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item 12 as presented with one stipulation.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those oppose? Nay.
Nay.
So, three ayes and two nays. Item number 12 is passed. Item number 13?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 13 with 17 stipulations.
Is that enough?
No.
No, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to my staff. We're good with that?
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Aye.
Okay, any oppose? Aye. Three, four, two against. Okay, that one, motion passed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're on item number 14.
Is this the one we've been looking for?
No. The other one after that.
It's the one after that.
Jeez. Oh, yeah, there is.
For the, for the record, my, my, my record time for, went to 3:45, so, just so you know.
Hey, before you start, Mr. Orde, Mr. Orde...
I think I got to a 4 o'clock one, one time.
You guys are going to continue to work here in the county. I'd like to get with you later, okay?
You can call me anytime.
You got it.
I can be here at any time.
Okay.
All the other stuff we're already doing in the county, and I appreciate it.
You got it.
It's healthy, robust.
Thank you. Okay, item, guys, guys, take it outside.
Can we take like a three-minute break?
Yeah, we need to take a three-minute break.
Real quick, real quick, like really three minutes.
30 seconds.
No. Natasha's jaw just dropped. What?
All right, item number 14, public hearing discussion, approval, disapproval of ordinance number 2024 PZC 0024. This is in regards to guesthouse casitas.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've provided this presentation before. We've had conversation. Essentially, I'm here before you today to request doing a text amendment to our existing development services code as it relates to guesthouses and casitas, specifically to allow for cooking facilities, meaning means of cooking within a casita, as well as removing the limitation on rentals of those facilities. In addition to that, minimum distances as specified in the building code, changing the 45% instead of floor area of the main floor, but gross livable area of the entire building in case, in case it's a two-story building. And then, lastly, removing F, which once again refers to means of cooking. We met and discussed this item two meetings ago, and you asked staff to move forward. We've properly advertised, gone to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they recommended approval, and we're here before you today.
Okay. Any questions?
Was there any opposition from anyone, anywhere?
I haven't heard any opposition with respect to this. I know there's a lot of folks in the queue here that are happy because the, the range, oven, stove, means of cooking thing is, is a holdup for folks.
Meaning, they're waiting for this...
Yeah, we have, we have people in the queue that, that are waiting for this to happen. Yes, sir.
So, just to help out Supervisor Goodman, it's going to create sales tax, because they're going to go buy stoves and ovens and stuff, right? That's perfect, okay.
We just need to get an appliance store in San Tan Valley.
At Home Depot, until, until we get the appliance stores, right? Okay.
They all must be bought in Pinell County.
You can write that, replace that now.
Write that in.
Okay.
Supervisor Sertie? I just think we need to make sure that people aren't turning into, if they have a big backyard, they have two, three, four casitas, and they're running little businesses like that, you know? I think it's intended to have one, you know, for grandma or your mother-in-law, and...
Yes, sir.
Not to be renting these out and creating little slum lords.
In my case, it'd be, when I'm in the doghouse, I, I got to go, have a place to go to.
You definitely want the stove and oven, then, yeah.
Okay, there's a public hearing aspect to this. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to comment? Wow, we cleared them out fast, didn't we? I seen that there's none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Supervisor Kavanaugh, are you still on?
Yes.
Okay. So, can I get a motion moving forward, then?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 14 as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see. I made a mistake. I, I want to make a motion to approve item 14 as presented with no stipulations.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Okay. That was an aye from Supervisor Kavanaugh, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, item number 15, public hearing discussion, approval, disapproval of ordinance number 2024 PZC 00224. This is in regards to nuisance, chapter, rubbish, trash, weeds, explain.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have Ian with me here today from the county attorney's office. About three meetings ago, Ian gave a PowerPoint presentation, so we'll not go through that PowerPoint presentation today. The intent here is to provide a tool in a toolbox to assist with co-compliance cases that have to do with rubbish, trash, and debris on properties, which makes up the preponderance of, of our cases. The other types of cases are more related to zoning or building without a permit. This is consistent with work in other counties and is supported by Arizona revised statutes. It would replace the enforcement portion in our existing code with this new amended text moving forward. If you have any questions, Ian and I are here to be able to answer them.
Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. There is a public hearing to this, so I'll open up the public hearing at this time. Anybody from the public? Let me give them time to respond if they do, no. So, it's, being that there's none, I'm going to close public hearing, and then, could I get a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would make a motion to approve item 15 as presented with no stipulations.
Okay. Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Aye.
And Supervisor Kavanaugh, that aye was quick. Is that an aye?
It's an aye for an aye.
Okay. An aye for an aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, item 16, this is discussion, board members' request for future agenda items or reports to be presented in an upcoming meeting. Anybody have anything that they would like to see on an upcoming meeting? I have an item that I would like to bring up. I would like, I'd like to ask our staff, I know Supervisor Miller went to Florida and had a meeting, or went to the NACOS in Florida, and he came back and he reported about AI, artificial intelligence, being used in different departments. I would like to have our staff, meaning our planning and zoning and our IT get together, there was a specific area that I think was of interest to Supervisor Miller and me as well, that I would like to see if there's some program or something out there that would help us expedite our services, the screening and projects and things that come in, and maybe we do something on a, on a, on a trial basis, and look at it and see how it's going to go. Would that, I'd like to give you a direction to do that, okay?
You're referring to like plan review and those type of things?
Correct, correct. That's what Supervisor Miller referred to.
Right, yes, thank you, Chairman. We are in the process of setting up a meeting with our vendor already, a seller for that.
For those of you that didn't see that, that's the big thumb up.
That was even discussed at the league as well.
Yes.
There were some discussions there, yes.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah. I forgot about that.
But, and it will, I think it's something for a lot of departments, for a lot of places for efficiencies.
I agree. Okay, and being, there's no other than we're going to...
Hand that to you.
During the meeting.
Let me hand that to you.
See, guy, see, guy...
Trying to make my record.
Oh, man. Well, they...